Let's call this meeting in order, please, at 7:00 PM. Welcome to the Scioto Township Board of Trustees meeting. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We all stumble back into receipts.
Clerk Flintoff, could you please call the roll?
Harry?
Present.
Yable?
Present.
Flintoff, present. Brandt?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Riser?
Present.
All here, also present, Office Coordinator Akin, Township Attorney Jim Fink.
Adoption of the agenda. Are there any requests for changes, additions, tractions?
I would make a request to move M1 directly after H. Brian Camiller from Plant Moran, Belisha and Brandon are here for M1, and I know Brian is on a tight schedule today, would ask that M1 be moved immediately after H1.
Is there support? I'll support that. Any other changes? Sir? We haven't any other notes, did we? Okay. A motion to adopt the agenda, please.
As amended.
Okay, you get that?
Motion by Reed, support by Riser?
No. Or was it David or was that John?
David moved, I supported.
Oh, I thought that was. Okay.
I said as amended.
Oh, as amended, okay, you got that. Great.
You modify.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? Motion passes, seven zero. Communications to the Board of Trustees.
Enclosed, no comment?
No.
One question.
Oh.
We have a picture from.
Jared?
We want a, what was funny?
Jared?
Jared, about a bus, pedestrian crossing near a bus stop, and there was no verbiage, no description. Is this a request to put a pedestrian crossing here?
Oh, there was another part of the correspondence that came with this.
Oh. He's also emailed us in the past, so some of us on the board know that he has, yeah, he's been asking about safer transport to the bus stop at the area of Dexter in Wagner Road from the Hartman complex.
Right.
But, but David, that was my mistake. I was having trouble with my Adobe, and I did miss a couple pages, so I'll send out the full communication.
But it is in the packet online. No?
Nope.
I thought it was. All right. Anything else about correspondences at this time? All right. Next is public comments. This is the time for members of the public to speak for up to five minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Anyone present, come up and speak if you choose. Good evening.
Cheers. I'd like to speak to the Scioto Township barn, and in order for you to understand my train of thought, I need to tell you a very brief story. Couple of weeks ago, I went to a meeting for a group of women, and during the break, and I was wearing this sweatshirt with my barn, not my barn, but. One of the women, who I barely know, spotted across the room and came to take a closer look at the sweatshirt. And then, out of the blue, with no coaching from me, she said, "I love that barn at the corner of Scioto and Wagner. It makes me smile every time I see it." And then we went on, and soon that was it. But I got home and got to thinking. I know there's been discussion about what to do with that barn, and possibly to the fourth room of Agent Jake's house, but I think you can do better than that. If you go along Jackson Road, we've got at least three very nice looking signs that say, "Welcome to Scioto Township." What's wrong with having a sign there by the barn, with perhaps an outline of a barn and its trees, and say, "Welcome to Scioto Township," because we are proud of the rural part of the township. You are backing properties that maintain the rural aspect. You're developing trail areas. You're tickled that Bestergard is at the top just north of the barn. You're tickled and proud of the style preserve not too far west of the barn. Why not indicate? Because I think most people have no idea that our launch to the township, myself included, people on the stage, why not indicate that you have pride in the rural aspect of your township? Then I got to thinking, all right, so what do you do with the barn? And I tossed out several possibilities on being to use it for storage of the township. But I also got to thinking about the friends of the barn, which I believe that contract is not renewed. But, you know, should you look at them, they can't pay a whole lot of money, but they could have sweat equity. You know, could you think of them as sweat equity towards maintaining the barn? Another thought I had was, it's a relatively small piece of property, but it could be big enough to develop a pocket park. There is, as far as I can think, with, it used to five miles radius that barn, there's no place where you can simply go on a nice afternoon, have a picnic. What have you developed into a park? So those are my suggestions to get you thinking. You are a bright, creative group of people when you put your minds to it. So please, put your minds to it and do something positive within a barn that does not destroy your heritage or township that came from rural heritage. Let's acknowledge that.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Anyone else present? Come on.
Not all about money, about the quality of life here too. And I think it may seem odd that Quakers, Amish, and Baptist men and women, they actually don't need a contract, and they have, it's novel around here anymore, their word. So anyway, that's one thing I want to say. And the other thing is, when I come down Jackson and Z Road, which I just did, and I try to avoid it as much as possible, and I always hear about the speed limits. Now, we could get a Washtenaw County cop out here with a camera. They have him in Seattle and at that intersection. We would make enough money in probably half a day to pay for that. And I personally am, I don't want to hear any more excuses about that traffic. And I was glad to hear somebody from the Planning Commission mention about people trying, that are disabled, do not have a car. Personally, I'd drive a Hummer if I could around here, because that's how dangerous it is. So we need to do something about that, and I think we could pay for it with the amount of tickets we would render. Anyway, that's it, and I like all of you sitting here, and I like the direction of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else present in public or for public comments? No? Christine?
Currently, I don't see anyone's hands raised for public comment. Anyone in the public who can speak on Zoom, please raise your hand. No hands are raised.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I reply to one of the public comments?
Yes.
Ms. Fletcher, I wanted to give you an update. I have contacted Neil Miller. He indicated his schedule somewhat depended on rainy days, that he could come look at our barn, so I have not heard back from him, but that doesn't surprise me at all based on what he said.
Please, bud.
All right. Moving on to approval of the minutes.
I have approval of the minutes for our April 8, 2025 meeting.
I support.
I don't know. Right, right.
I support.
That was motion by?
Risers.
Risers.
Yable.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? Minutes approved, seven zero. All right, now, M1. Affirmation of a five-year utility rate model and a year-two increase to water and sewer rates.
Sure, thank you, Belisha King, Brandon McNeil, and Brian Camiller for being here. The background is here, as you know. We have a six-year capital plan and a five-year rate plan. I want to turn it over first to Brian Camiller to give a brief overview of the review and refresh of the rate study, and then go to Brandon and Belisha. Hi, Brian.
Hello. Thank you very much for accommodating my change request. I do appreciate it, and so does the client that is having their meeting five minutes or five feet outside this door. I appreciate the time. For those that were in attendance a year ago or a little bit less than a year ago, the township passed a very significant one-year, what we called the rip the Band-Aid off increase to the water and sewer rates. And it was done at the time with the intention in the model that years two, three, four, and five would be significantly less, that the rip the Band-Aid would be the jumpstart that your rates would need, start to provide the cash that is necessary in order to pay for all the projects that are, have already been approved or are planned. And so I am happy to tell you that based on the activity to date since then, we are either on track or a little bit ahead of schedule, but we don't have a full year yet to know for sure. But I know we're definitely not behind what the model predicted. And so, at least for this year, and hopefully that will continue into the next several, the rip the Band-Aid off worked. And so now we're in a position, year two of the model, that would ask you to raise the water variable rate and the sewer variable rate by 5% each. No change to the readiness to serve charges, no change to the water debt charge. Those remain the same. And so what that means, when you put it all together, is that most of your customers would not see a 5% increase because we're not changing the fixed components. Most residents would see somewhere between a 4% to 5% increase for the next year. So that is right in line with the, what the previous board had approved. But a five-year model is not a five-year commitment. Rates are only adopted one year at a time, and so it's up to this board to decide what you want to do with your rates. But I'm hoping that you'll agree to continue following the model. We will continue updating it on an annual basis, and hopefully we'll be able to stick with what it says as long as there aren't any unforeseen circumstances or significant new projects, which of course, if we didn't know about it a year ago, they would have to update the model later on. So I am happy to answer any questions, but in summary, it is stay the course.
Board members, let's begin with trustee Riser.
I don't have anything. I've looked at the PowerPoint. I've heard the presentation this year, and I remember significant presentations from you and Brandon last year. I'm prepared to move the model motion, but I'll wait to hear from others before doing so.
Christine?
I would, Riser, some.
Okay. Just, you know?
No questions. I'm satisfied with this. Thank you.
No questions, Brian. Thank you very much for your help.
Brian, I do have a question. It says customers with larger meters will also not see an increase in their fixed fees, but they will see an increase in their water usage.
Everybody will see a change or an increase to the commodity rate.
The commodity, thank you.
Yeah, no, no comments other than I just want to thank Belisha and Brandon too. We have an interim meeting for review of this. Want to invite Brandon and Belisha, if you have anything to add to this.
Sure. I just want to assure the public that in deliberation with OHM, our engineers, and the finance team, and the rest of the board, we took a lot of consideration of what was approved in the capital improvement plan for things that need to be taken care of at the utility department. And we understand that there is a cost to it, and I believe OHM, myself, the board, and other staff members did our best to hone in on what was actually important for us to accomplish and make sure that we presented a clear, good plan for the township to have, you know, a good future with the water and sewer utilities. So I just want to assure the public that we did our due diligence and making sure that we're doing the right thing. And then as far as getting the information out about the increase in rates, I'll let Belisha speak to that real quick.
I created a Word document that will go in, like an insert inside the bills that are mailed. I plan on doing that May, June, and July. And then for the bills that are emailed, I plan on using the same verbiage that will be sent in an email along with their bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen?
I don't have any further questions. Thank you for the work that you do, both of you.
Well, thank you. Trustee Riser had the model motion. Is there a, is there support? I heard a ditto, but that was just to. Okay. Clerk Flintoff, roll call vote, please.
Thank you for our rules of order tonight. We're starting with Riser. Riser?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Yable?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Brandt?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Resolution adopted unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Brandon. Thank you, Belisha and Yable. It's Brian.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Consent agenda. There's only four items this time.
I approve all the consent agendas. Don't have any.
It's too late.
Or add, or attend. I don't have any. Support.
Got it. Riser?
And Reed?
And Reed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no. Oh, I take that back. Roll call vote, please. There's finances here.
But yeah, if anybody can call for a roll call vote. And so tonight, we'll start with Riser. Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Yable?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Brandt?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Consent agenda adopted, seven zero.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to reports here. Included in reports tonight, planning report, Sheriff's Executive Report, Park Pets and Preserves. Was that included? Yes. Or that was by trustee Reed. And then there, I think there's another report, yeah, from our Parks Director in a moment here. LPC and a summary of Washtenaw MMPC meeting from Tomos. Are there any other reports to? Clerk Flintoff?
Sure, just briefly, this is our last meeting before the May 6th special election. For those of you in the Dexter School District, there is an election on May 6th. We have 500 ballots returned to date. This affects 3,3192 of our voters total. Anybody who would like a ballot can come to Township Hall up until Monday, May 5th at 4:00 PM to receive an absentee ballot. And you can also vote at your polling place, which is at the Kiwanis Club on Tuesday, May 6th, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. If anybody has any questions, can let us know. Second, just again, on the audit, there's probably about eight different people in the office working on the annual financial audit. Want to thank everybody for their work, but we're, we're right on track.
Any other reports? Verbal? Oh.
Just a question. Dexter School will pay for the election?
Yes. Yeah, well, we will get reimbursed.
I just wanted to inform the board that we will have a special meeting a week from today, 6:00 PM, where we'll hear a PFAS presentation from approximately eight, eight or nine people at Eagle. And, yeah, they, we had a planning meeting. Christie was in on that, and we've coordinated exactly what the presentation is going to include. There is a message up on our website about it. If anyone has questions, they can submit questions. We've already gotten several questions, and we will be sharing those questions with Eagle prior to the actual presentation. And then I also wanted to inform you that on May 21st, the ZBA will have a, be having a special meeting and in-service. It'll be public, it'll be on Zoom. Topics will include ZBA best practices and recent case law applicable to the ZBA. The speaker will be attorney Matthew Zielinski. I think that's how you say his last name. He's from the Rosati Law Firm. He's an experienced municipal attorney. That's it.
Thank you.
Pressured Yable?
Yep, just a couple of things for folks. Some updates on the projects we've been working on. We're closing out settlement. That should hopefully be done in the next one to two weeks. That settles out all the taxes from last year, and we reconcile with the county. I did receive an update from Bank of Ann Arbor. They are going to upgrade our interest rate on all of our funds in our checking accounts that were earning 1.4% to 3.75%. I did hear that went into effect hopefully either the end of the day today or tomorrow morning. We've closed a couple of bank accounts, just extra bank accounts that only had $2,000 or $3,000 in them. One was one of the open space land preservation accounts at Five Star Bank. We moved those funds to Bank of Ann Arbor. Choice One Bank, the Fire Department Fund, and the Township Wide Road SAD Fund, both had less than $3,000 in them in those two accounts, and we're going to do the exact same thing. Looking at the rest of the bank accounts to see what we can consolidate and make a little bit more concise so we can get some additional tasks done more quickly, and that's it. Thank you.
I have a report. On April 9th, I met with the Road Commission and also MDOT. And from, if they haven't started already, but they were, the start date was April 17th and will end on August 8th approximately. So MDOT is in WRCR, working on the I-94 construction from Parker to M-14. So it's of 4.97 miles of repaving. It will be around $10 million. So what they will do is they're going to reroute traffic along Jackson Road at night. So it should not interfere with regular traffic, but just be aware of that. Also, on March 27th, Alicia Dyer's office from the Washtenaw County Sheriff invited the municipalities, the supervisors, mayors, and whatnot, to a meeting, and we're going to be meeting quarterly. At that meeting, we introduced ourselves and the new staff from the Sheriff Department, and there's going to be some updates. Now, this is in the works. They're thinking, they're talking about things, and I don't know when this is going to begin. But if you notice in our contract, there's something called banked hours. And it's a kind of confusing, and even, they don't even know where it began, but it did somewhere. They're thinking of eliminating that and just charging us for direct service, which I think would make more sense.
I don't know. I'd like to look at it.
Well, it's not even, they're talking about this, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other thing is that they're talking about, oh, they're very short-staffed, and they are working on recruiting. They do have some new trainees. However, they're looking, they're tight with funds, just like every other municipality. And so they're, they're thinking of, when we have, I don't know if this is going to be, this will be a new contract or an amended, but having the municipalities pay 50% of the training. Don't know yet, this is, but I'm just letting.
No, no. It's just my initial reaction.
Yeah, that's exactly the initial reaction at the meeting. Everybody was the same. So these are, you know, things to be aware of. They haven't set a next meeting yet, but everybody was, they wanted to meet quarterly. Another thing, let's see. Oh, I've been working with the, I'm the Chair of the Lockalpine Sanitary Authority, and I am learning, we meet once every four months, and I guess this has been going on for a long time. However, it's pretty much a new board with Webster election and then our new members. So the engineer and our utility director, I don't know if this is title, from F&amp;D. He runs the plant, he runs everything. So we've been meeting, and they've been really helping me catch up on, on different aspects. I'm going out for a tour on Thursday to the, to the sewer plant, which, kind of looking forward to that, sort of. Anyways, it's been a fun learning experience. Everybody's been very supportive. I'm hoping that we can work together, all of us, both Webster and SciO with our new boards, and help those customers over there. Wildwood Lane, this was kind of, came up unexpectedly. Received an email from a resident that lives on Wildwood Lane. So Wildwood Lane is, runs along Liberty Pond up of Liberty Road, and there was some flooding issues over there, some trees. So a project manager, Chris Chang, Parks Director, Murphy Harrington, and myself, we went out to check it out. Well, within all of this, I found out that we have, SciO Township has an agreement, a road management agreement with Wildwood, which I was not aware of. So we, we are looking through that. The down trees, the Parks Department will be taking care of those, and then we'll be working with the residents and to come up with solutions. One other thing, Arbor Hills expansion. This is the, Arbor Hills is in Salem Township. We're all, well, it's a landfill, and GFL owns it, and they are seeking, what is it? Permits from the state to expand. This is a long process. It's going to take a couple of years, but this is the beginning. All municipalities in Washtenaw County must have some type of agreement or sign up on the permits or something. And I don't know all the details. This was just an initial email and contact. And I believe that is it for. Well, I did attend a Road Commission Board meeting with David Klubek, and that was very interesting. Boy, she runs a tight ship. She's a Bart Fuller, the chair there. And it was actually quite fascinating. They do a lot of hard work for us, as, as for the whole county, and they really, they know what they're doing. So that's it for now.
Sure. On the the Lhasa, I would just suggest inviting the Lhasa Board on a tour. If if the we're paying the Lhasa contractor.
Sure.
If you could share it out. Because I there's probably a lot of board members that haven't been to the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, I've.
So I mean, I.
It's ten o'clock on Thursday. We can always reschedule.
Yeah, but just share it out with everybody because I know the three members from Webster are new. I mean, yeah, you know, I've been on it for a while and you've been on it for a couple of years. Ryan's new. But I just think it's a good opportunity.
Sure, I just may go out this time and then I don't know.
Whatever you want. I just get conscious of however much they're charging us.
I'm going, Ryan. Oh, there he's already out there working that day, so it's not like an extra charge.
Cool.
Just to, yeah. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Just a clarification. Did I understand Arbor Hills is the name of the gravel pit?
No, it's the.
Okay, because you said Arbor Hills and it's a gravel pit. So.
No, I said landfill.
Or landfill, I'm sorry, landfill, not gravel pit. And where is that again?
In Salem Township?
Okay, right. Okay. I looked up.
Yeah.
Why did I write that?
Kathleen?
I have a question on Arbor Hills. I thought I heard you say that they are going, they want agreements from the municipalities. We contract with priority waste, so should they not get an agreement with priority waste?
I don't know. This is the beginning. This is all I know from what they said. And there is something about tipping fees. There's rumors that tipping fees will go from thirty-five cents to five dollars. And I know that Supervisor from Ypsilanti Township is inquiring about that. She's very concerned because that will be a lot of money. Anyways, I'm just giving you the initial from what we know at this point, but just to be aware.
The tipping fees, is that paid by priority waste?
I believe it's in the in contracts.
But not separate that we would have to pay for it?
Well, it would be and they would pass off that to us.
No, I'm asking, can they pass that off? We have language in our contract that says we will pay any tipping fee increases? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, I'm not suggesting anything. I'm just giving you what the the talk is at this point. I'm only it's only initial, so we'll get more information as things unfold.
Well, we do have a township attorney sitting here. I don't know. Smiling, but we lost spontaneous question.
And this is a separate, this is what Supervisor Stumbo had mentioned at the Sheriff Department. And she brought it up because she's concerned about all everybody needing more money and and increasing fees.
So S I O Township has not been officially informed of this? That's a question.
Apparently not. If, I mean, that was the first I heard of it. I don't know all the details. I'm just giving you what was said.
And a question, and I'm sorry if I should know this. Is the Materials Management Group that we talked about a couple of meetings ago, is that something we should get on our agenda to appoint a member to?
This is what Kathleen went to.
And Tom Off was there. He wrote out.
So I know Tom had asked us to appoint somebody. Yeah.
It's an elected official.
Well, the next meeting, should we do that?
I think so.
Christie, you've got that down?
We'll talk about, do you expect we'll talk might talk about priority waste at that meeting?
Yes.
So that would be a good meeting to do it kind of altogether.
It's the next one meeting?
May thirteen?
Yep.
Oh, um, I think, are we finished with reports other than the Parks Director's next report? Okay. Hi, Murphy.
Yeah. So I wanted to begin by talking with you all, both the elected officials and community members about a legislative victory so impactful that many of you listening might not even realize what a huge success story it is. It isn't often that we can boast about a law that achieved a success rate of ninety-nine percent. The success story I'm talking about is the Endangered Species Act, which became law in nineteen seventy-three. After successfully preserving over three hundred endangered species, species on the brink of being completely wiped permanently from this planet. After fifty-two years of success story after success story, the current administration, the administration under President Trump, is pushing to make a harmful change to this act. This administration is pushing to change the definition of harm as it currently exists in this incredibly successful law. The longstanding definition of harm, which has been upheld by the Supreme Court case after case in the Endangered Species Act includes the altering or destroying of the places in which endangered species live. Any wildlife biologist, wildlife enthusiast, or wildlife hobbyist learns first and foremost that habitat destruction is the number one cause of extinction. To protect, to protect a species, but not the ecosystem and habitat it depends on for critical life cycle functions is like saying it's illegal to kill a fish, but legal to completely drain the water from its tank. It doesn't make any sense. Not only would this change unravel decades of painstaking work, work that people have dedicated their entire lives to, it would also allow for other species on the precipice to become vulnerable. We in Michigan have seen a success story firsthand, that being the habitat protection and restoration of the endangered species, the Kirtland's Warbler. That's our success story here in Michigan. This is a species that we're so proud of to have protected and saved from extinction that we put it on our license plates to show the whole world this major accomplishment that we have. Unfortunately, stories like this are going to become a thing of the past if this Endangered Species Act change is allowed to stand. But we now have the chance to make our voices heard and to tell its administration that to keep its hands off of our laws, especially off of laws that are working the way they have always been intended to work. So I wanted to ask that you all join me in voicing your disapproval of this change by submitting your comment at federalregister.gov. There's Q R codes next to the door hanging there, one on our parks board, and then one on the table out in the hallway. You can also call your representatives to let them know that you do not agree with this change and demand that they support their constituents in seeking to keep this law intact. And I would also like to ask that the board members here tonight, given the opportunity, can pledge to join me in signing a letter to this administration describing all the ways that Michiganders in this region and statewide have benefited both socially and economically from this law over the past five decades. Thank you. I just wanted to start with that.
Good question.
Yes. No, you can ask questions.
What is? Generally speaking, what is the change in the definition to be made with harm? That's okay. And have we ever had this new definition in the past? Has it ever flip flopped?
No. So the definition as it is now is as it's as it's been since it was adopted in nineteen seventy-three. It has been upheld, I did check into this multiple times by the Supreme Court. They have ruled that this is the definition of harm. So harm also includes the taking, killing, or disturbing of any endangered species. Under this change, you would be permitted to, let's say, log an area where an endangered species is known to live. This also includes aquatic environments, so there could be excess fishing or oil for drilling for oil or oil pipelines in these areas if this change takes effect. We now have twenty-eight days left to post our comments and to reach out to legislators.
Thank you.
Thank you. And something more cheery, things that we're doing in the Parks Department. Okay, so you might have seen on the Facebook page that we installed Purple Martin houses over at the Fire Department. And we just tried to check them today. The winch is stuck, so we're going to fix that tomorrow. But we'll likely see Purple Martins in it starting next year. And the nest boxes that were installed at Liberty Pond have two nests in it right now, Eastern Bluebirds and Tree Swallows. So that's good. And then tomorrow, myself and the new tech Noah are going to put up the rest of our boxes at Van Curler. The Eagle Scout Project is basically officially completed once we get the engineered wood fiber installed. Hopefully this week, we just we are pushing the date back so much that I was like, I'll let you know when we're ready. So hopefully this Thursday or Friday, and then it'll officially be done. We did a collaboration with the Utilities Department to implement bamboo toilet paper into Township Hall for the purpose of there's more sustainable products and it reduces the chance of landscapes that are prone to wildfires. Specifically, we get a lot of our toilet paper and paper products from Canada, which is why all those wildfires, part of why those wildfires were such a problem a few years back. So this also will reduce our impact on boreal forests. The seasonal staff has started. Like I said, we just have one person right now. We have Noah. Nick and Mike are starting on Monday, and Allison will be starting the first of May. So we have full staff of really passionate people. It's very exciting. The parks have been focusing in the last two months on vernal pools. So we've been doing the vernal pool training or the vernal pool partnership. So we'll be tracking all of our vernal pools in our parks and then reaching out to S I O residents who we know have vernal pools on their property or suspect that they do. And we can encourage them to either allow us to monitor their vernal pools or encourage them and teach them how they can monitor their own vernal pools. Ongoing communication with Eagle has been happening mostly with trustee Noel. And we're working to determine the surf, the if the surface water in West I O Preserve has been impacted by the contamination on Dino Drive. We're working with the Washtenaw County Water Resources Commission Office to ensure that ongoing work that's in that parcel between at Sloan Preserve, to just ensure that any of the work that's going on there doesn't negatively impact our floodplain or Mill Creek. And that's been going pretty well. Our first privileged scribe burn at Van Curler took place. Later this week, Liza, tomorrow, we'll be installing our nest boxes there. We're kicking off our wildlife, our summer wildlife initiatives with some notable partnerships being N A Bat, which is a North American wide bat conservation program. So we'll be contributing all of our data to them, and then they can use that data to help inform or provide that information to researchers. And in Washtenaw County and kind of just in this area, there's a big gap where bat research has, for some reason, been not happening. So we'll be able to hopefully fill that gap. We're also partnering with the Michigan Butterfly Network, Michigan Bluebird Society, U S G S, and like I said, the Vernal Pool Partnership. Some, I know this a lot, first time projects that we're going to be doing are the photo point monitoring, which are useful for, especially with some of the larger scale restoration work we want to do. It'll be good for monitoring how these ecosystems change over time as a result of our work. And there's a whole protocol, one hundred fifty-two page protocol on it, so it's pretty involved. We have acoustic bat monitoring, the butterfly and moth surveys. And Noah has expressed some interest in doing black lighting. So it's attracting nocturnal butterfly and moth species. We kind of get a balance of daytime and nighttime species. Have the frog and toad surveys, which kicked off last month, which involves, again, nocturnal work. So we're monitoring our parks to see what our perp inventory is. And we're working on a formal logging and categorization software or app for our restoration efforts. So it'd be like we go out to Sloan and we pull garlic mustard. Want to be able to make sure that we know the area that we worked in. We can gauge our success of pulling or keeping track of what rate of herbicide we used and seeing how each of these species responded to make sure that we know what we're doing is working. And if it's not, what we can do to better address those failures. Okay, ongoing projects. We have Z Road Pathway is still underway. We're getting closer every day. We really are. Township Hall Loop Loop Upgrade is ongoing. That work should begin shortly. I guess we talked about that the last meeting. The tractor purchase is underway, and we're just waiting for word on a property disposition policy before we sell the Kubota. I believe.
You and I are hoping to bring that the next one.
Right. And then we're just waiting a little bit more for the exterior bathroom to get underway as the permitting had to change. Once we decided where the geothermal housing was going to go. So we're so close, tantalizingly close on a lot of these. So we're getting there. I have four suggested township projects which involve, some which involve board approval and then others that are just like changes within Township Hall. More on composting paper products. Love to figure out a way for us to compost all of our paper towels. Something that is a pretty easy way to reduce the amount of waste that we're contributing to landfills. So we're using paper anyway, so we might as well compost it. We live right next to Ann Arbor. They have a pretty large facility. We just have to figure out how we could work together with them to make that possible. Thinking about a food composting container too, so which could help reduce the amount of waste again that goes into our landfills, and we can incorporate all of that compost into our landscapes. Was after working so much with the Vernal Pool Partnership and seeing how some of the some of the work that's being done in other states like Pennsylvania and Maine, they've been able to create some legislation around what qualifies as a vernal pool and therefore how to ensure it's protected. And after kind of looking at our wetland policy, I think there's a little bit of room to figure out how we could incorporate the vernal pools too. In general, vernal pools aren't a rare ecosystem, but they do support wildlife that depends on them. So having as many good quality vernal pools is never a bad thing. And then one thing that I've started working on, which would need board approval as well is joining the Bird City Network, which is like, it's not necessarily just a Michigan thing, but we would be focusing on partnering with Michigan Audubon to figure out how to become a Bird City Network, which is an acknowledgement of cities and townships that implement bird positive, can document efforts to have bird positive changes and like ongoing efforts. Some of those are documenting, improving bird habitat, addressing threats to birds, being able to engage people in breeding and bird conservation and encouraging sustainable practices. So even just doing some of these like composting efforts would count as a documented way to qualify. And then if we were accepted into the Bird City Network, we would get plaque that we could put on our like, welcome to S I O on Jackson Road on that sign that just says, we're a Bird City Network.
Could we be a bird township?
We could, probably. I think they make an exception for us. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Very much.
I just.
Anybody have questions?
Just just briefly, I want to thank you for all your work and also acknowledge also your work on Popkin Cemetery, which is another project. And remind everybody, Sunday, May eighteenth at two P M. Would love to see as many board members there as possible for a ceremony. The headstone for Sylvester Richmond, the Revolutionary War veteran, has been placed. A lot of the other gravestones have been unearthed. Amazing volunteers working over there, and Murphy and the team is going to clean up the leaves and some of the logs. But there's going to be a whole ceremony, a piper, a drummer, the whole nine yards on May eighteenth at two P M.
Well, thank you. Thanks. Have a good night.
Thank you, Murphy.
Oh, I'm still here. Park Road.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes.
Thanks.
Unfinished business, adoption of revisions to the rules of order of Board of Trustees.
So I just cleaned this up. From last time, we had a good board discussion after four committee meetings um presented here for discussion and possible action.
Question.
Trustee Riser?
I'm sorry.
You have a question? Go ahead.
Uh, on page three, two dot six, quorum. Do we ever define what quorum is? Like a quorum shelf consists of uh four members of the Board of Trustees.
It's in the statute.
Clerk is correct. It's in the statute. A, a reason not to define a quorum in your board rules is because if, uh, see this happening, but if the statute changes, there's no reason to define something that is clear and that you can find any way in the, in the statute.
And John, I did at one point, I can't remember what was happening. But there are, you know, some extraordinary situations where it might not be for where there's guidance from the Attorney General. Yeah, there was, there was one and, and it didn't have to apply. And I'm not, you know, speaking, but I know that this is, has come up before with boards where they oddly find themselves in a subquorum situation.
And then some, some uh rules say that it wants to establish a quorum continues until the meeting is adjourned. Is that also addressed in statute such that we don't need to?
I don't think it is addressed in the statute.
Would you like it to be addressed here?
Uh, it, um, some boards do that. Like if somebody has to go and we've established a quorum, but a quorum continues until the meeting's adjourned. If that's, I mean, that's something we might want to do. Uh, if somebody, if a couple of people have to go, but we still want to conduct business.
Oh, are you saying then the board rule, in that scenario, the board rule would permit the body to continue business even if it loses quorum?
That's right.
Oh.
Some boards do. I'm not saying, oh, that's the way to go. I'm saying it's something to consider.
So if we have three members, then those three members could vote and?
Yeah, there's reasons not to do it either. Reasons not to do it. It's only three members make the call. Reasons to do it is if there are business that needs to get done, uh, and we still need to get business done at night. So there's pro and con. I'm just saying if we should address that in, in that rule. That's all I'm asking. Two dot six.
I'm, I'm more comfortable just keeping it at quorum. I think if, I think if four of us were to walk out right now, um it would, it would, the meeting would be done, should be done. Yeah.
Yeah. My recollection is that Robert's rule says that once a quorum is established, you can conduct business even if you no longer have a quorum until someone raises the issue. And, and then you have to reestablish the quorum. I would have to do research on it, but I doubt that this board is a public body can conduct business without a quorum, even if one is established and then someone left.
No, it's any reason. I'm not moving to change it. Just wrote it.
You have anything else?
No, no.
Okay, trustee Reed?
I have a question or a request to add to rule number four on page four, a sentence at the end that says, and I'm suggesting whether you can either accept it or not. Designee shall include submitted item in proper agenda section. Because nowhere in that does it say the designee will put the submitted item into the agenda. And we've had problems with that in the past.
David, are you proposing a sentence at the bottom of rule four?
Yes.
Would you please state it, state it again?
Designee shall include submitted item, submitted items plural, in the appropriate agenda sections.
I think that's fine. That's clear. Thank you.
In this section. Okay. Anything else? Kathy?
I have a few questions. Um. On two point two. Okay, the first sentence talks about how a special meeting can be called by the supervisor or upon the written request of a majority of the members of the township board. Um. Then the next sentence starts with upon call of the supervisor, the township clerk shall get noticed. Um, shouldn't it be upon call of the supervisor? Or, or members, or yeah, a majority?
Yes.
The township board.
Yeah, that's a good catch.
So the four members would give the notice of the time and place of the meeting?
Or wait a minute?
No, it, it would be, and, and this would conform with statute. Um, Gillian and Kathy is that no matter who calls it, be it the supervisor or written majority of the board, um, I give the notice.
How about upon the call of a special meeting?
Right.
My only question there, uh, just to be precise, is the language about the written request of four is not called a call. It's called a written request. So I think it would be upon call of the supervisor or receiving written request of majority, comma. Is that okay with everybody? It's a little more precise.
On the two point five, cancellation of meetings. Question here about emailing the entire board. And I don't know if you understand the question, but okay, here we are. Board members who will miss a meeting must notify the supervisor or clerk by emailing the entire board at their official site of township email addresses soon as possible. So you do two things. You address it to the supervisor and forecourt and you email the entire board at the same time.
Well, that's a good point. I think we had had in there initially notify the supervisor or clerk. And then there was a request to have the notification go to the whole board. So I think it would be fine to just notify the whole board.
So remove the supervisor or clerk?
Yeah, so we would strike in the fifth sentence, strike supervisor or clerk by emailing the
Must notify.
So it would read, must notify the entire board at the official SIO township email addresses.
Okay. And then in number two point seven, last sentence, it says second to last sentence, if a board member is going to be absent, they must notify the board as stated in two point two. But actually, I think it's two point five.
Got it?
Um. Ten point five point three. Motion to clear the floor. What was the purpose of this? What's the reason for this provision?
The reason for this is if we have all become sufficiently confused that it is, we do not understand, we no longer understand what motion or amendment is on the table. That there be a mechanism that someone can make a motion to clear the floor.
We're going to assess if we are all reasonably confused.
I'm fine striking this rule. I'm not promoting it. I'm, you know, I'm always happy to hammer out whatever we got. This, this has been um in our rules, we've, to my, I, I don't think we've ever used it, Kathy. And I'm not attached to it. Has anybody ever used this rule? Anybody a proponent of this rule? Should we strike ten point five point three?
Isn't that kind of what we do recess?
Sometimes.
Like, okay.
No. So it shouldn't be.
Attorney think you're kind of thinking, I can, what do you, what do you?
I was thinking that was what was happening now, but no.
Oh, the ten point five. Oh, okay. Let's clear the floor. Um, okay. So strike that? Yeah.
I have one more thing and I I didn't, oh yeah, it's five point two, permission to speak. Board members wishing to speak shall first obtain the approval of the chair. I am a little bit concerned about that because there have been many times when I've raised my hand to speak and you're nodding. Um. Nobody, the chair doesn't see it.
Uh, yeah, if you do this back here, we're not going to be able to see it. But if you do this
Often does like this. Or, you know, raise, raise your hand into the air. And even when we were sitting in horseshoe fashion, the chair is going to need to be watching all members of the board routinely throughout the meeting to just check, you know?
Yeah, I understand. So that's why we're
I said this to you before.
Yeah, that's why we're, we're starting at one end and doing
That's, that could work.
Yeah.
It's work tonight, I will say. Um, but I'm saying that you've got to be vigilant throughout the entire meeting. That we're going to have to, all of us be vigilant in respecting that rule.
All rules.
Well, right now I'm talking about this rule.
But all rules.
Well, okay. But um, sometimes
So are you.
There are some people who interrupt and we're gonna have to all be aware and be vigilant about that. That's my point.
Okay.
If I may, this rule doesn't say you have to raise your hand. Because I, I can say, I don't comment.
Oh, yeah, you're right. It doesn't.
Doesn't say you have to raise your hand. You can request.
She said, she was the one that said. I mean, we can request permission in different ways.
Yeah.
I, I am okay with that. It's just that there's got to be a continual awareness of everybody when some people are trying to speak and they haven't been acknowledged.
Yeah, so that way, um, permission to speak, this way, we're not having everybody speak over each other and some people talking more than others and not allowing others to speak or not have their turn. So this all goes together.
Potentially, that could, that can happen.
It has happened many times. Okay, anything else?
No.
All right. Treasure? Do you have a comment on what she, um, no, no, okay.
Oh, I don't have anything on that for everybody else.
Um, well. Uh, okay, that's. Oh, um. Two point three, work sessions. A work session may be scheduled to allow more in-depth discussion of a topic. On and on that. Okay, so there isn't anything in statute talks about work sessions. It's either regular meeting or special meeting. Okay, however, work sessions. So at the last, um in addition to work sessions published with the regular meeting schedule, work sessions may be scheduled from time to time using the same procedure for a special meeting as stated in two point two. Well, of course, because it, we could have a work session within a regular meeting, but then that makes it really long. So we would have to have a special meeting. However, if you look at, if you go to special meeting for it to go. Four point five. No, or you're right. Um. Four point eight, I had the wrong, um, sticky on the wrong thing. So in especially, if it's a work session, um, when we get to well, we, work session would not have a public hearing, wouldn't have unfinished business or new business. A work session is like, um it could be maybe a project that we need to discuss. So what would the order be?
So the, the work session, I think, I think in your introduction to these remarks, you use the term work session a little differently than defined in here. Um, a, a work session, it is meant for more in-depth discussion, a project, something we need to work on. A work session may be scheduled as part of our reg, it may be part of our regular schedule that we set at the beginning of the year. Or we may call a special meeting for the purpose of holding a work session on topic A. The order is just the order for anything that we might have in any special meeting under four point eight. Be it a work session or not. So for example, for a work session, I would imagine it'd be call to order, roll call, pledge of allegiance, adoption of the agenda, public comment, new business, public comment, adjournment.
In the past for work sessions, we haven't always had public comment twice, just. Um, I think we chose to include this. That was a conscious choice. Okay.
Yeah, our prior rules had special, special meetings had public comment once, but these proposed have it twice.
Okay, so just leave, so the um agenda would be the same as a special meeting then?
Yeah, but the new business might have something really creative and wild and different under it.
Okay. Um, here's some formatting issues.
I can fix those before we publish.
Okay. And see. I think those are the one, just the yeah, just here and there, there's like an eleven point five, two periods, you know, just uh, something should be bold or not. Um, that type of thing, but. Okay, first one off. Oh, wait, one other thing. Um, rules, it says Robert's Rules of Order, the newly revised. Do we have a copy somewhere that we can keep here?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I purchased seven copies last time around we did this. I'll make sure everybody has a copy if we adopt these, but I don't want to buy anything unless we adopt these.
First point off, did you?
Yes, um, just a comment and a question for Jim here. Um. I'm looking at eleven point one and eleven point four. Eleven point one, I just want to point out, um Gillian, you weren't present during the conversation at the last meeting and this just came up earlier in this meeting. I want to point it out just for awareness and clarity. Eleven point one, we added common township policy. And the reason for that is because, um you know, we always require a simple majority of votes unless that these rules, a township policy or a statute requires us to have a larger majority or a roll call vote. So for example, as we discussed last time, financial decisions. I have no idea why we started doing a roll call vote with financial decisions. It was our prior right and we don't have to. Um, our procurement policy doesn't require us to. If we ever wanted to require ourselves to, we would do that by amending our procurement policy. So that's why township policy is added there. But it caused me to um wonder, Jim, if in eleven four under roll call vote, we shouldn't also have a nod to deferring to statute, which sometimes does require roll call vote. we shouldn't also have a nod to deferring to statute, which sometimes does require roll call vote. So we have votes required, you know, except for decisions required by statute to have a larger majority. I believe there's also decisions that perhaps by these rules, township policy, or statute, that might require a roll call vote.
There are some things that require a roll call vote. For example, uh, we'll be in the closed session.
Right.
Requires a roll call vote, um, it, what wouldn't, it, it doesn't matter if you don't put it in, in the sense that you still have to do it, but I suspect that the board will look at the rules to, to do a quick check on something rather than having somebody look up the specifics issue. So I think your suggestion is a good one.
Okay, so then with that, I'd offer the following amendment to the top of eleven point four to say, yep.
Based on what you were saying, I'm wondering, it says township policy, should it be township written policy? And does this include, like, customary practice? Because when you just say township policy, that can be interpreted in exactly the ways.
It's a good question. I, I don't interpret township policy as anything other than a policy adopted by this board.
So it would be a written policy?
A written policy adopted by this board.
So customary practice wouldn't count?
No.
We need to stay away from unwritten rules.
Well, what, like, what are you thinking about? Like, when we just started doing roll call votes with no?
No, I'm not thinking about that.
I think if there's anything you think of as customary practice, it should be reflected in the rules.
Fine, as long as we're consistent, bud.
So I, I would suggest at the top of eleven point four, roll call vote, to start with, except for those decisions required by these rules, township policy or statute. No, not except for. Maybe at the end we should add.
How, how about, um, when required by statute or when any member demands?
Okay, how, how about when required by statute or township policy, township policy, or when any member demands? I think third time's a charm.
Do we have a township policy for roll call vote other than statute?
No, but we might, for example, um, if we were to modify our procurement policy to state that all financial decisions shall be taken by roll, or financial decisions over X dollars shall be taken by roll call vote.
Yeah.
I can just.
Just to be safe.
So when required by statute, township policy, or when any member demands a record roll call vote.
Township policy is the written policy. Should we say that?
We could, um.
See a little problem with that wording, because it's, this is one sentence, and in that sentence, it says, no member of the township board is entitled to speak on the question. So you could read it to be, if required, when, when a roll call vote is required by statute, ellipses, no member of the township board is allowed to speak on it, is entitled to speak on the question. I don't think that's what you meant.
No, it's not.
Like calling the question and recording, it's like completing two things, roll call vote and calling the question.
So how about if I lead with a separate sentence that just states, you know, um, you know, that roll call votes may be required by statute or township policy, period, additionally, when any member, um.
fourteen four said, when you know when you do a roll call vote, and the process is in the second half of that sentence, um, was included with order of roll call vote.
There you go.
Or it's on them.
I like that. So, um, the process from after the chair has stated the question, the clerk is directed, et cetera. Those last three sentences will roll that into eleven point five. So, call. So the roll call vote is eleven four, and the order of roll call vote is eleven five. And eleven five would start with after the chair has stated the question. The clerk is directed to call the roll, no member is entitled to speak, et cetera.
You want to combine those two?
Mm-hmm. Combine those two into eleven five, so that eleven four is simply just about when we do roll call vote, when required by statute, policy, or when any member demands one.
Anyone?
It's fine.
Kathleen, do you have anything? Oh, I'm sorry, were you finished?
Okay.
Uh, yes, I do. Five point all conduct of meetings. Uh, we just had a very nice um, conversation with board members in, um, sharing thoughts. Um, it flowed very nicely to me, that's where I'm used to. So when we get to five dot two, permission to speak, this seems to be an onerous requirement that it says here, board members wishing to speak shall first obtain the approval of chair. You would not have had that back and forth conversation you just had with these rules. So I, I think there should be some leeway, um, but that's, I'm just one member of the board. Uh, five dot, dot three speaker, not to be interrupted. I, I just want to point out, this applies to all board members, I, there's a little bit of not following this rule we just saw earlier today, so, uh, shouldn't, if we are following the rules, then we should follow, or we should make the rules more flexible.
Well, at the, the row commission meeting, everyone had, had permission from the chair, and I have not attended. No, I, I've attended other community planning commission meetings, but.
I mean, I, I do have a thought here. I, I, I do think there's a subtle difference, and we'll just, I've, you know, been on the board for, for six years, so I'm talking across people and, and different moderators, but I do think that there is a difference between, uh, moderating and, um, the seeking approval prior to each, um, opportunity to speak. Um, and it's subtle, and I'm not quite sure what the language is, and that's why at our last meeting, I think at David's suggestion, it was added the sentence, the chair shall not deny approval. Um, but it is, it is a balance, I think, of, of not being too onerous. I think the chair maintains moderation of the meeting, and that there's ways to do that without, you know, each person, you know, raising their hand each time. And I'm not sure what the right language is, but it's a balance.
Yeah, and so if there's people talking over each other, then we can just call to order, or bring them back to order.
I'm, um, I had the opportunity to watch the last board meeting. I was absent, Jillian was absent. There was excellent give and take during the discussion, and it was a pleasure to watch. I, I think there has to be a provision for clarification-type questions that might come from people on the board about what the speaker is talking about, not new issues, but asking them, oh, what did you mean by that? Or, what, I mean, I saw some of that at the last board meeting. And so that's kind of what Kathleen is saying, I think, here tonight. There needs to be an opportunity for give and take, but it has to be respectful.
I, I do think Kathleen.
Five point three might address that issue, um. When speaking, no board member shall be interrupted without the member's consent, provided, however, that the member speaking shall yield to a point of order.
Well, so we've had some situations, I'm sorry to pick on you, Jeff, but where one person might be speaking and someone gets a thought, they think it's pertinent, and it may well, well be pertinent, and they interject it right then.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, this has happened several times, so I'm not so sure your five point three probably takes care of that.
Is there suggested language changes on this?
Turn you think, what, what do you think?
Heard what you said about the road commission meeting, madam supervisor, and that's the way most board meetings that I, that I have attended, either municipalities or nonprofit boards work, is that the chair recognizes someone, and then that person is entitled to speak. I, I also heard what trustee Brandt said, and observed it, and did the same thing myself at one point during this conversation. And so I think that the, the rule that, um, you are recognized by the chair to participate in the discussion gives order. And I think that some grace and flexibility, so that you can have a collegial conversation as a group of colleagues is a good idea, and that the rule is, th, th, this whole set of rules is not a statute, it's, um, as they say in Pirates of the Caribbean, more like guidelines. Um, that keeps the rule that the chair recognizes people, and you should not bite each other's heads off when someone says, what did you mean by that? Not that anyone here would bite a head.
I'm, I'm concerned about, um, abuse of speaker not to be interrupted. Honestly, Jillian, you have interrupted, uh, most of the speakers to me with comments while they're speaking. So I just would ask there's some awareness of that, and let's try to manage that.
And Kathleen, you have done the same in other board meetings, so will you abide by these rules as well? Anyone else? Okay, so I guess we are, the model motion, is there a?
So I would make, uh, the motion to adopt the proposed, um, rules of order of the Syo Township Board of Trustees as amended here at the table tonight.
Question amended, um, by clerk Flintoff and support by trustee Riser.
Roll call vote, please.
Yeah, go ahead.
Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Yable?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes, Brandt?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed? Rules adopted, seven zero. I'll get these published and out.
This, uh, M two. Yeah, M two, under new business, pathway connection along Park Road.
So, this project is in partnership with the development along Park Road. They are, as part of their community benefit outlined, um, are installing a pathway that will, you know, give people in the community a place to walk and connection, and what we're looking at right now is to hopefully continue their pathway to connect to the community to the east. There is an existing sidewalk, uh, structure, sidewalks within that community, and so we would like to, instead of leaving a gap where people would either have to, uh, walk in the grass or more likely walk in the road, we'd like to eliminate that possibility by instead, while the opportunity is there, allow ET McKenzie to continue their paving to connect the existing sidewalk with the sidewalks in the new community, thereby, uh, eliminating a lot of the costs that would be associated if we were to do this later and have to ask the company to come back. I'm also interested in this as part of the long-term effort to put a pathway along Park Road. There's a lot of reasons why I like this idea, the, the road itself, there is no wiggle room with the speed limit. I've had conversations with the road commission, it has to be at fifty-five. And because of that, knowing that we have two preserves, the Sykert properties and West Syo Preserve that are accessible through Park Road, it would be safer for people to continue using the Z Road pathway, which would then connect to the Park Road pathway, which would give them safer access to the parking lot that we're going to be installing this year on the Sykert properties, and that uh, trail connection would also lead to the West Syo Preserve. So all in all, it just, it adds a lot of connectivity, but it also reduces a lot of risk associated with traversing that road. It'll be an eight-foot wide pathway, similar to the Z Road pathway. It'll be accessible for bikes, wheelchairs, all, all of the above.
Clerk Flintoff.
Um, just a quick question for Murphy, or Kathy, or anybody here who might know. Um, how, how have we verified that Trailwoods, um, would not pay for this, should not pay for this?
It is.
Have we asked them? I mean, has?
Yes, oh, definitely, yes. They've been asked, and the way the compromise was, not even a compromise, because they aren't obligated to do it. The compromise is that we, they are working with us to make sure that when they're out there completing the pathway, we have the opportunity to fund the segment that we want completed.
And this will connect, uh, the sidewalk gap, to, it'll take it to the, um, the subdivision that's north of, uh, French Carter, is it Arbor Point?
Yes.
Yeah, so this'll, it'll take it to the sidewalk of Arbor Point.
Yes.
So someone will be able to get from, uh, Starbucks and all the chicken, wherever they have that chicken place, to, so they'll, yeah, walk through there and get all the way to the Sykert property where there's gonna be a parking lot or trailhead, and, and all into bike or walk, basically.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see, just can't see. In case there was a question, um, what Murphy has said is correct. That's my understanding that Trailwoods is not gonna pay for it, but we are also engaged in discussions with the Trailwoods developers on resolving some landscaping issues, but that's all internal to Trailwoods. And there's also drainage issues too, but those are all within the Trailwoods neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay.
I can't, oh.
Yep. So Murphy, I know we spoke about this, uh, you and I directly earlier today. I, I would be okay moving the model motion with one amendment to it. Um, I know that Trailwoods and ET McKenzie have promised that any of the necessary, uh, surveying or permitting and all that cost scope is covered by Trailwoods' portion of the project. If we can get them, I guess, Attorney Fink, I'm going to look at you as I'm saying this, so I say it in a way that makes logical sense. But move the model motion, rather, contingent upon ET McKenzie verifying that the permitting, engineering and survey is included in the project's scope. The reason I bring this up is this document, the quotation specifically excludes all of those items.
Would you please repeat that, Brian?
Yep. I would move the model motion, let me go back to it, sorry.
If you would just make the motion you're making, that would be great.
Yep, contingent upon ET McKenzie verifying that the permitting, engineering and surveying necessary for completing this portion of the project is included in the project's scope.
When you say the project's scope, what do you mean exactly?
Well.
So more.
You look at this document, which is attached. The following items are excluded from this proposal. Permits, bonds, fees, engineering, survey. And the list goes on for about forty items.
I was wondering if an alternative to that, I've spoken with, well, someone, Chris spoke with OHM today. And they said in lieu of that proposal, they have drafted proposals saying that ET McKenzie would take on any liability should the sidewalk fail or cause any sort of issue. So in lieu of saying they have to cover costs of engineering and permitting, instead they're just liable for any failures of the installation.
I just want to say, say one thing why I like Brian's motion that I seconded is that it gets us closer to making sure all the proper work is done. I understand the liability, but I'd much rather, you know, take more steps to make sure it's done correctly and not just worry about liability. I do wonder on the contingent on ET McKenzie verifying, I guess, a question, how would we do that?
I guess we could have them, we could have them change the quote and have them included as additional items under the quotation. That's one way. I'm up to Attorney Fink if he has a better idea. Or sign a statement on letterhead saying that they would agree to cover those specific items.
Does that mean that Trailwoods is doing their part of the sidewalk in the next two weeks?
The sidewalk that exists within Trailwoods would be where we're connecting to.
The internal part.
So that's already there?
Yes.
And another point, there is current discussion going on with Trailwoods about bonding. And the Trailwoods residents want OHM to release some of the bonds to cover some of their expenses. But OHM, excuse me, they want OHM to facilitate releasing the bonds. But OHM is saying that the specific requests by the residents are not covered under what the bonds cover.
Does this have anything to do, what you're saying, has anything to do with this project?
I don't know. It could, and he's got bonds listed here. And I, the bond issue and release of the bonds is coordinated by OHM.
So this would be. Yeah.
I can, I'll wait until.
Oh, go ahead.
So permits, bonds, fees, engineering and survey. It's a straight line. Do we anticipate there'll be many costs associated in getting a survey? And have you talked to Matt about?
Yes, I can raise, I'm sorry.
Oh, go for it.
I'm sorry.
I thought. Yeah, I didn't even know Matt was involved in this, Matt. I thought, I was told that this was just an ET McKenzie thing.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I'm not involved, but I can help. I think I can help kind of guide this a little bit. You have authorized OHM to design Park Road as part of this design. We have already kind of surveyed and laid out that portion of the pathway. So from Arbor Point's driveway to the west where it gets to Trailwoods property line, we already have a sidewalk kind of laid out and designed. To be honest, it's very flat. It's very straightforward, what I think Murphy and Roy have negotiated and envisioned. So I don't think, other than what we've already accomplished, there's much more design needed. We were planning on building this chunk as part of Park Road. But if you guys are willing to fund it now, I think it is wise because we honestly don't know when Park Road's going to happen. We don't know, you know, there's a funding gap there. And I think once Trailwoods put this pathway in, what Murphy kind of narrated is exactly what's going to happen. You're going to get people kind of creating a little goat path from the subdivision to the completed path. So if you, if the board's willing to fund this sooner, it could connect now. And then we simply wouldn't have to build this as part of the Park Road project. It would already be there. So so to answer the question, and Ryan's motion was great, but I don't think there's much engineering needed, if any. The survey is completed. We can gladly hand that over. And in fact, I think Midwestern Consulting did the part, the trail design probably has topo for the area. And this is very, very simply laid out. So I don't, the only thing I don't know about, and you guys will need to figure out how to execute a contract with ET McKenzie, I think they've quoted it. But you'll want some kind of warranty. And so Murphy was alluding to that, like guaranteeing that it won't fail. So working that into the contract or the purchase order, I think ET McKenzie would be more than willing to do that. I don't want to speak for them, but that's pretty much standard contractor speak. I think they'd be willing to do that. So I think, I think you're really far along. I think a lot of the things that you're worried about are valid, but because we've already done some of the design, we'll share that with ET McKenzie, we'll help get this over to Chris and Murphy, Murphy's hands. And then they can negotiate, you guys will have to probably have a contract or some kind of agreement with ET McKenzie to come back Mariah or Jim to approve, and then you guys should be all good to go.
Thanks, Matt.
I just had a suggestion, given that it sounds like our engineer has done some engineering that we weren't aware of and that we, I just think this item needs a little more work. I know we want to move it along, but I'm wondering, because I'm just remembering now, Murphy, we have a special meeting next Tuesday at 6:00 PM. If we had, if you reviewed the engineering, got the draft contract, had our attorney have a chance to actually review a draft contract, if we approve it next Tuesday, is that soon enough to keep it moving? Okay, because it sounds like that would give us some time to get the pieces in order.
Just so you know, Eagle has asked me if they will be the only ones on the agenda for the special meeting. I had told them yes.
And we would, yeah, we would be changing that, but it would be really quick.
Be quick, yeah.
I agree.
Couple of things. You got four business days to work a contract with a company who's already given us a bid and said they're not going to do engineering permits and fees. And the engineering is already done. It's, as I've said, it's perfectly flat. What Brian has added to this motion, in my mind, is a poison pill. ET will look at that and say, forget it. This, this bid is null and void, we're going to rebid it. And it's, work's not going to get done this year and it'll be fifteen, twenty, thirty percent more expensive next year. So I don't see the problem in moving this forward as is tonight so that we can get, get that pathway finished and and be done with it.
So, so just a process question, David. So, I mean, were we all aware that the engineering was done? It was all tied up? Is that, was any, I just, I just, and I'm not trying to call anybody out, and it's certainly not Murphy, but it's just sometimes these sidewalk gap filling projects pop up and they feel rather uncoordinated from our end as a township. And I.
I thought that I had conveyed that engineering had been done on it. Sorry.
Okay. No, no, and it's not, it's not anyone. This, this is like a perennial issue we have, even predating you on sidewalk gap filling, that sometimes the Parks Committee gets pulled into sidewalk gap filling. I do not think that is who should be planning sidewalks generally. I think it's got to be much more in the planning commission realm because this, this winds up just being an issue.
If I could chime in there.
I'm at, agree.
Hi. So Trailwoods, per the PD agreement, they were putting in the pathway and paving the road in front of their project development, right? So they took it to their property boundary. And then the plan was ultimately to move forward with Park Road. But because of the complications with Park Road not getting done last year, and then it's going to get done this year. And then they're going to do the Sabler Road bridges that they still have to complete probably next year. Park Road's kind of slid, which isn't a bad thing because the township's still figuring out if or how they're going to fund it. But the sidewalk gap was always part of it because the paving's going to end there too. So the Park Road project's complete and the board saw that proposal. There was a map of the limits from start to finish, from zero to there. So it shouldn't be a surprise. I mean, it's, it's been a while since that was approved, so you're probably not remembering, but it's always been part of it. So there was never supposed to be a sidewalk gap. And I think the reason why, you know, Murphy and Roy want to move forward is just because it might be a couple of years before Park Road goes. And it just helps people get from A to B. So anyway, just hopefully that clears that up.
And that does make good sense. I mean, I will say the proposal is to use $20,000 from the Park Road MEDC grant, which is okay. I mean, it's all part of it. And this all makes sense. I think, I think Matt, and my memory is imperfect, but I do remember approving the engineering work. I don't know that we've ever had a presentation on it.
No, I don't think we've not.
No, because the design's not done and because the road commissions, we're still working on the road commission and trying to save as many trees as possible. So there's really nothing to present yet. I mean, if you guys ever want to interim partial design presentation, I'm happy to come in or even meet informally for those that are interested. But we meet, we be every couple of weeks with staff and kind of give them updates. So if board wants to sit in on those, you guys are more than welcome.
I guess, Matt, just one last question on this. It, since some of the work is in the road commission right away, that, that part of, I guess, permitting and
You're covered by the, you're covered by the existing Park Road permit. That's why it's advantageous for you guys to do this. I think what David said is true. I think if you were to do this as a standalone, it would be thirty percent more expensive. If you do it as part of the Park Road project in the future, you're going to get a good project and savings too, but you're dealing with potential inflation, you know, two years down the road, so.
Yeah, I'd withdraw my motion then. I think if we, if we had some more information earlier, I wouldn't have made that motion, but it just was something that came up earlier today and we didn't have all the information.
And I'll support it.
I have a comment, please. The notion that you would put in a contract that, what did you say, the liability that the sidewalk will not fail? That's a timing thing, right? How long does it last that it doesn't fail? That language is so imprecise, I don't know if it helps us at all. I mean, is it for the first thirty days, the first six months? It's.
I'm interested to hear if Matt is still on, because I think that he implements these in his like regular business endeavors, but I'd be curious to hear what his thoughts are on that.
Yeah, so on a typical, on a typical Scioto Township project that you guys do for pathways or sidewalks, we usually require a two-year maintenance and guaranteed bond. Or you could ask for a two-year warranty. And then typically that bond is for fifty percent of the value of the the actual construction. But in this case, because it's such a small little thing, I would just simply ask for a two-year warranty.
And as a friendly amendment to the motion, if that's okay.
Okay.
David and Kathy, that we would just add at the end of the model motion from 101446, the MEDC Park Road Grant.
So that, who is the motion by great support panel? Okay, amended. All right, so let's do a roll call vote. Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Yable?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Brandt?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed?
Yeah.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Murphy. Thanks, Matt.
M three designation, designation of person to prepare and distribute board agenda and packet under rules of order.
Is. I prepared this item in anticipation of the adoption of the rules. This would simply implement the rule to designate a person. My recommendation is that that designated be Kristi Aiken, Office Coordinator. She has largely been carrying out the responsibilities, at least in part, for years under rule four. Would make the motion to appoint her as the designated person set forth in rule four of the rules of order as adopted on April 22nd.
Kristi, you're good with this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Ryan.
Well, let's voice, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? Okay. Motion passes.
Yep. I note when people are asking for votes.
Okay. So I guess six to zero, six zero. Yeah, all right.
Yeah, it can just be that As are louder and they win.
All right. WCRC and Scioto 2025 Road Project Agreement. Finally, it's been a long couple of months trying to get this together. So every year, well, for years, we, and Scioto is very fortunate that we we find roads important, so. This is the time of year where we need to adapt or to approve the road project list along with the funding. And this is a little bit different. I did, what's in the packet is disregard what's in the packet. I have provided, working with Township Attorney, well, Mariah Fink, Jim, I don't know if you've read over this, I'm assuming you have. What was that? Oh, you have it open, okay. So. Yeah, why don't you go ahead with the where we are with the ARPA funds.
Oh, sure, just as a reminder, we budgeted, budgeted effective just a few weeks ago, the 101446. And this is the handout of our budget that we adopted for the Roads Department. Up to $321,000 for this proposed contract. That $321,000 is the remaining authorized ARPA funding. So if you recall, with our ARPA funds, we've done a great job. We got an ambulance and outfitted it. We did the IT refresh of rewiring this entire building and new servers, as well as we funded the road improvements last year. The road improvements were done more efficiently than expected, had some remaining ARPA funds. So we were able to reappropriate those $321,000. So those ARPA funds have been appropriated for roads since December of 2023, which is the background there. And that's why you'll see atop the, either one of the proposed contracts that Gillian has, the history there, that this is really just a kind of amendment of that. The history there that this is really just a kind of amendment of that December 2023 commitment of ARPA funds. You know, once these are expended, all of our ARPA funds will be will be gone. But regardless of funding source, it's it's all coming from 101446 Roads. And we budgeted 321,000 for this contract.
Yeah, so the Road Advisory Committee, we spent many meetings discussing which roads were most important for improvements at this time. And then the Road Commission, they do own the roads, so they contract or we partner and we choose the roads and of course we pay for it. And then they did come back with their list of roads and we did include Liberty. Liberty right now from Z to Parker is heavily traveled because of the Stabler Park. That's that project that's going on, so the traffic has to divert and they're getting a lot of traffic. Plus, there's a bog there years ago. David, maybe you remember when they built up the the that part, so was that 2014?
It's, I think, probably goes all the way back to the 80s. They tried and tried and tried.
No, the Townshipwide said we we it was $700,000 we put into a 15-inch.
We budgeted, I think, a million of it. I think it came in, I think, four or five hundred thousand.
Wow. So it has sunk again. It's when that floods, it covers the road and then it blocks off residents over there from traveling over to Z, so then they would have to take Park, which is closed down. Anyways, so we have two proposals here. We have option one, which is all of Liberty from Z to Parker. Railroad Street, these are all gravel uplifts. There's no repaving or paving. East and West Pine View, Lakeview and Park Ridge Drive. Option two is Liberty from Stag's Leap, so right when it begins the bog all the way to Parker Road and that's the difference, but we finagled the 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 formula to come up with these numbers. We had them verified by the Road Commission. They were very gracious in helping us with our wording and the resolution, so we could use the finish using the the ARPA funds.
Question is the Road Advisory Committee, and I see some here, and I thank you for your work and for being interested enough to come and sit to this meeting to be here. Is the recommendation of the RAC that we adopt option one?
Yes.
Yes.
Not going as his draft, but it's his option one.
That we would, we would need to appro- we would need funding, extra funding to to meet that. So what would I say in here about 90? Oh, into the resolutions, like 95,000 above what the 321,000.
So I, can we talk about the the budget first and then get into the details of the roads? Because I know there'll be a lot of questions. I want to thank the Roads Advisory Committee members for your work. Thank you. A question, we just adopted a budget five weeks ago for 321,000, and so I would be, it would be irresponsible for me to not ask. Why are we considering a roads budget so far beyond what we just appropriated? Why? Why do we know now that we need $100,000 more and we didn't know that four weeks ago?
Well, we were still working, but working on all of this and our past conversations, Jess, when we, and I didn't know we had extra ARPA funding, I said, well, we don't have any funding for roads. Roads are important and you had said that, well, $400,000 we've been, that's about the approximate what we've been doing every year that we could.
Jillian, that was a conversation in probably October or November before 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 we went through the entire budget process.
And I did mention it during the budget process as well, that roads for 400,000, so that's now, that's why we have two options here.
Yeah, and I and I appreciate it. If 400,000 is is the number, but but we we went over this roads budget in depth and we we were looking at 120,000 of DDA improvements, 25,000 for Wagner, Dexter and Arbor, and 321,000 estimated for the county roads contract. And I do appreciate things can change. But this is the budget we unanimously adopted. Okay, five or six weeks ago. I mean, and so it's not, so I mean, I appreciate there's a case to be made for doing more of Liberty Road, and I'm open to being compelled. I just, I'm just, I don't know what information changed in the last five weeks.
Well, the information that changed is that the Road Commission gave us a list of roads that they thought were priorities. So we took, actually, I think they had the two roads, which was actually there's other roads on that we removed, and I believe we kept Liberty because of the road traffic and then Railroad Street. That hadn't been done in a long time. Yeah, Lean? Did you have something to say?
No.
Oh, I thought I heard you say that you wanted. David?
I have a point. When I was involved with the Roads Committee, I would always get the original, the mid-time midterm and the final billing from and often the final billing from the Road Commission was 50,000 under what they originally did.
That's true.
And so they say it's going to cost either 330,000 or I'm sorry, 400 with our with our with the rebate, it's either going to be 416 or 3 or 20,000. My point is I'm saying if they leave Liberty to the end and they've done all the work, perhaps there'll be excess and they can do more than just eight 8800 tons. They can maybe do 10,000 tons and do a few more feet of Liberty. Because they they build a lot of cushion into their bids and they, but they bill us for the actual work. And so if there's extra money, I would say, let's go with the, let's go with the 8800 tons and ask them to take any extra money from this 300,000 and apply it to Liberty.
Okay, yeah.
Does that practically work though with the work they need to do on this road? I don't, I don't know enough about.
Yeah.
It's a gravel lift. I I don't know. You'd have to ask Matt at, is it Mike or Matt at the Road Commission?
It's Adam.
Adam now, okay.
Adam's the Director of Operations.
Okay, so you'd have to ask him if that's possible. Maybe they can do the first 50 or 100,000 dollars worth of work and prep for the for the actual lift, but I think they just go in there, they scrape it and they just dump gravel. Just dump gravel. I mean, it's certainly more complex than that, but not nearly as complex as paving.
But they cite drainage improvements, forestry shaping, these.
They do, that's a, that's a cut and paste.
Yeah, that's.
That's what they say they're going to do.
Yes, yes.
If you take a section out of what they recommended, you have no idea whether you could get any additional yardage out of it. You don't. We don't rather.
Right.
Well, I do know that last year let me think, what was the road? There was or was it two years ago that they they did all the work and then they had, we had an extra job just in case and they were able to do that. Yeah, so that's pretty, David, I I that's pretty normal. Yeah. Trying to remember. I think it was two years ago. Because the paving project last year, it's that was more expensive, but.
Yeah, I think years ago, I remember discussions about this issue on Liberty Road. And this has been a very difficult problem spanning many, many years. And it's almost like there's no solution.
There's not because it's not a bog.
There is a solution, but no one will like it.
I like it.
Two dead ends.
I like it.
Two, two cul-de-sacs on either side of the swamp. That's the, that's the real, or a huge bridge that spans the whole thing, which of course is a couple of million dollars. A couple cul-de-sacs is $100,000.
Have we, I'm not.
A lot of pissed off residents.
Yeah, absolutely, but I but I have like year over year, you know, I mean, it's it's a chronic issue, so I have we ever looked at alternatives, you know, a bridge or, you know, a different path or?
Is Matt still here? Yes, he's still here. Matt? Do you have a comment about?
I have, yeah, I don't know very much about this. I do know this loading road has been problematic for a long time, but I haven't never been engaged with the Road Commissioner or the Roads Committee on solutions. I mean, you would have to do some pretty significant geotechnical engineering to look at caissons and pylons and some kind of like, you know, call it a bridge, call it a hovering road, but it would be pretty significant dollars and I think a couple of million dollars is probably a little light to be honest. But those are questions that could ultimately be asked of the Road Commission. I mean, you are you know, asked to participate in spending pretty significant money over time, so it becomes a math problem, right? A capital improvement that would address this or doing this year over year over year for the next, you know, however many years. I I almost guarantee the Road Commission wouldn't be interested in cul-de-sacking it, but I understand where David's coming from, where, you know, it is costly and I mean, I think I think there could be some pretty significant engineering costs and design and construction costs to do a bridge, but it it might make sense eventually at some point. So that's all I really know. I can't really speak to it because I've never been really involved in in studying it or looking at it. And I don't know if the Road Commission's done any studies or cost assessments of this. It would, being, you know, a road, a primary road like that, maybe they have. Those would be interesting questions to ask.
Yeah, the last time that work was done with that 15 inch was like 2014. So it's not every year that we put money into Liberty Road, just to be clear.
Okay.
Following on what Matt just said regarding the bridge, speaking about caissons and footings and all that. We're talking about a natural area, a wetland, a bog.
Yeah.
And following along what Murphy just said about the destruction of natural habitats. I think a bridge like that would significantly change the the whole aura of that area of the township. I mean, you're putting in basically a major, a major, not a suspension bridge, but maybe an arch bridge. I I don't know what they do. But it wouldn't look like a rural road anymore. That section of Liberty would not look like a rural, in my mind, would not look like a rural rural road anymore, so. And you'd ask the residents out there, they probably would rather have the road closed for two or three weeks in winter time than have that bridge, quite frankly. Because it it's really only about, well, now it's about 20 days, I think, 20 or 30 days. So, anyway.
You know, I don't think they've closed it down in the past couple of years though because of the 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 uplift. It was a 15 inch.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it eventually it will be. Okay.
I think it was closed this, let's see, this is I think in January, I think it was closed for a few days, but it might not have been for flooding. It might have been per construction. I don't know, but the the road was closed at Z Road for a few days.
Okay. Oh, did you raise your hands?
No, I did not.
Oh, okay. Okay, and anyone else?
Are we still talking about the budget?
Well, I, sure, if you I do.
I mean, that's what the topic was.
I I liked David's idea of I don't, I don't know what others think, but it sounds like David Bruce was proposing an idea that we should stay within our budget and then try to, at the end of this, kind of squeeze out more of Liberty Road. That, yeah. But to stay within the budgeted amount of 321,000.
So I'll I'll just let the folks from the RAC, you know, we we went through an extensive review of the budget. The request from the various departments put us in a 2.4 million dollar deficit. And we come through the budget to narrow that down. We are still in a deficit position. So that's why this board is interested in staying within budget because we already are in a deficit, which pulls from the general fund, which is not sustainable over time. So that's why attention is to this item.
I I would say too, I know the the RAC is doing good work and Jillian's doing great work on kind of prioritizing roads that I would say we also just adopted the CIP in February. I think at that time, we didn't yet have ready kind of a list of priority roads. But now we do have at least for this year. So I would, you know, really encourage RAC and this board that if we have an update even mid-year to the CIP, say like a priority of roads for next year, even if it's a working list or something like that, it's just helpful to always kind of update the capital plan as we have more information.
And that's what we've been working on is the priority, the priority list and we have this big, Ian is in charge and Caroline is helping because eventually we're going to have to have some type of funding for roads. While we're, yeah, so we've been working on a plan on how to do that, but we need to we're inventorying all of the roads and by history types of road, what what else? The volume of traffic. I mean, there's a lot going on and we're doing it.
Also trying to separate quadrants to make sure each quadrant got some road maintenance or whatever.
Every year, so that it always is just in the highly trafficked.
Certain areas.
Yeah, certain areas, yeah.
And that's reflective of this.
Yep, great. That's great.
Could I ask? How did you determine East and West Pine View Drive should be included?
Yeah, I just, it's been I cannot access the data, but it has been.
It's never.
Yeah, but there's lots of gravel roads that have never been repaired. I drove those roads this evening before I arrived here. And they're actually in pretty good shape and they do have a crown. They have decent drainage in 90% of it. So I was curious how you picked that, those roads.
Well, I've driven those roads many times.
Now answer the question, please.
Part of it was, we took the MEDCRC list. I think that was on their list.
No. No, that was in the quadrants.
I have a motion.
Well, I'm I'm still, we're still discussing. So I'm going to ask the same question about Park Ridge Drive. How did you determine Park Ridge Drive?
We tried to do an SAV and that that didn't work. And it's been a problem and we walked there, we went over, we reviewed that to WCRC, but we walked down that area. And we decided that that should be one area we put on our list.
Well, there was $270,000 work done last year on Laurentide and Park Ridge. And now you're proposing another $100,000 for Park Ridge. That seems, that seems to be an unbalance of that road gets extra attention. I know there's been complaints, but there's plenty of gravel roads that have never had any attention, let alone $370,000 worth of work on them.
I guess I'd ask you, Kathleen, where are you driving this to? Because my understanding is we owe WCRC an answer by May 2nd.
Yes.
Now, if you're going to question every road that we agreed upon, that we worked on with WCRC, you're not going to get an answer by May 2nd. So what, what, where are you driving?
Well, I, I don't agree with the roads you've selected. These are not the roads that-
So what would you like us to do?
These are not the roads that the road commission recommended. So I'm asking the question, how were they picked?
If I, if I could just, across from the point, I wonder, Kathleen, if you could direct your questions to Jillian.
Okay.
As the person who brought it. So, so what are the, what are the, which, which of these roads, what, what, how different did the road commission list look? Because normally they give us a list.
Yeah, they had a west, she just asked me.
I know.
Okay, so the reason why we have Park Ridge is because in 2016, there was a neighborhood SAD process, which the township had charged them engineering under the SAD without the improvement. That's a whole issue in itself. And they wanted it paved, some wanted it paved, others didn't want it paved. It created a huge fight between residents over there, neighbors against neighbors. That road has not had anything done with it. So we decided to, to do Park Ridge to help kind of heal that neighborhood. Because that road does need a gravel uplift. It hasn't had one. It's only had an engineering study, which doesn't help your, your car at all. So that's where we came with Park Ridge. The rest of them, different segments of the township, and some of these have never been done before. So this is how we chose. Did WCRC, they chose West Delhi. That was just done what, a couple, a couple of years ago. So we figured that, why do it again when other roads haven't had any work at all? And also, when we receive complaints from residents, we take into consideration what those complaints are. And we do our due diligence by traveling those roads. I have, I have personally traveled Pineview many times and it's, there's erosion there.
Jillian, can I just, just-
Okay, I'm looking, yeah, I'm looking at the-
Which roads did the road commission propose?
Liberty and Railroad Street.
And so the Marshall and-
Marshall's just, it's already been done.
Okay, no, no, just my, my question is simply, and I, and just process wise, typically what we do is we get a list from the road commission. Usually we kind of like massage it a little. I'm just trying to understand, so Liberty Railroad and did you say West Delhi too?
I can't, I don't, yes, but the thing is, is that we did the same thing last year. They present roads to us and we change them.
I'm just trying to look at what the difference is.
Did they present it this, this year?
Yes, they did.
Yes, and actually they emailed it to the whole board.
That's right.
Is that in our packet?
No.
I thought it was included.
It is not.
Okay, well, I guess it's not then.
No, and I, I apologize, I wasn't tracking because I knew this was being prepared. So Liberty-
So why isn't the 2025 included? Okay, anyways.
So the road commission was proposing Liberty as much as possible.
All of it?
Railroad.
West Delhi, Marshall, that's all I remember.
I am.
Are there any other roads that we haven't?
Is there any way we can get printed copies of the road commission proposed list? So we can compare as we sit here.
Or we could just write it up on the whiteboard real quick. It's pretty, it's pretty close actually, now that I look at this, there's not much difference.
No, there's not. Could you pull it up, please?
I'm trying to find it. This is final building from last year.
So it looks like Liberty Road is one that they proposed. So we'll work from the, the proposal here just so we can nail this down. Liberty Road, they proposed the 330,000.
Which was from Zeeb to Parker.
Okay. Railroad, East Delhi to West Delhi.
Yes.
Then further, West Delhi Miller to Railroad Street. And finally, that was for $84,000. Marshall Road Baker to Parker Road, $79,000.
So they included West Delhi and-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, so they included West Delhi and Marshall and, and you're recommending we not do West Delhi and Marshall, but instead do East Pineview, West Pineview, Lakeview Drive and Park Ridge?
Correct. And how much was the, the, their, the amount, your total amount from their recommended list?
$534,000 minus their match, 133. So they're close to 400,000.
So what was the rationale, Jillian, for your recommendation to remove West Delhi and Marshall?
Because those have been improved recently in the past couple of five years.
Why was the road commission recommending them?
I don't know, because they just gave us a list, what they think. And when we presented our list, they were fine with it. If they would have said, West Delhi's really bad, you really should consider keeping that up, we would have, but-
But they didn't, they didn't feel strongly about it?
No, they feel strongly about Liberty.
Okay.
Just as a general comment, I think that it's easier for, for those of us who aren't so involved with roads to have an understanding of the criteria that may have been used by the road commission, by the roads committee in looking at all of this. And then, when there is a difference between the road commission recommendations and the roads committee recommendations, we would ask why, just so we understand why it's different. I mean, it may be fine that it's different, but just, I, so then I'm trying to make sense of all this and it's becoming more and more confusing.
East Pineview and West Pineview, have they ever been done?
No.
That's one, that's one criteria. My recollection is that, I don't even know where these roads are, but we've never been working on it.
I'm here on River Drive.
Yeah.
And Lakeview Drive, yeah, these are, these three, in my recollection, are new projects that I don't ever recall, all my time with road commission or on board, ever doing these roads. So that would be a consideration. Apparently they're not very big, judging from the price. But if they haven't been done in years, probably time to do it.
But David, we have a, a, a huge amount of gravel roads that have never been done. That there are no records for. So my problem with Park Ridge and the same thing last year with Lamp lighter, is people from that neighborhood complained. I, I don't think that's a good way to determine how we fix roads. And I've said to the RAC committee, nobody complains on my street. They're very nice people. And I'm not asking you to do my street, but my street and other streets are worse than some of these roads. And if Park Ridge didn't want to do a SAD, you gave them a huge amount of work last year, huge improvements. I, I just don't see why we would continue to give preferential treatment to people that complain. Because I can go and tell some neighbors, the only way you get your road fixed is if you complain. If you don't have an objective criteria for figuring out how to do these, these gravel roads.
Trustee, I just wanted to say that what the project that supervisor Carrie referenced is, we're taking it very, very seriously. We're taking paper records and pulling them up into digital format to understand the history of all the roads in that township. When was the last time it was done? How much did it cost? How long is it? How many letter B? So we're trying to get all that. Converting that from paper to digital is turning out to be one onerous project, but we're undertaking it in order to have a better idea of next year when we go through this project again, have a much better idea as to which roads were oldest, not done, that kind of thing. And not necessarily just relying always on residents. We could look at ABC Road and say, wow, that's a long road. It hasn't been done in 25 years. Go out there and take a look at it and we would, we could, well, we would have the data to know that. Like I said, right now it's all on paper. And we're trying to get it up there.
Yeah, so-
And I think once we have it in digital format, we're going to be much able to. And then is, what did Bob, eventually, the road commission, well, it's a G, GSI eventually?
G I S.
G I S, sorry. I'm getting G C S I in the brain. Yeah, eventually, so that we have to categorize everything first in order to, and we need to have funding for it. And here's the other thing. We only have so much funding.
I mean, the digital records piece and the R P I S piece that hands you through, that is something we'll be able to do for roads too, but that's a aside. That's down the road, down the road.
Yeah.
Unintended.
And what, what, what we're trying to do again, is, is what Bob said, is to understand that each, we divided the township into quadrants and we're trying to keep it balanced so that just not the southeast portion, which is where primarily a whole lot of activity happens. Right, that's the southern part of the township, so that everybody kind of gets a little love.
Do you have a map that shows like the quantum difference in the projects?
Not with me. What do you mean, just, just, you mean just of the quadrants? Yeah, I did not bring it. I think I was gonna- Basically, the quadrants, trustee, you know, are just divided. There's 36 square miles and there's, Zeeb Road goes right down the middle and then I think Park Road cuts right across and it's basically six square miles per, or nine, so, as they go through. So we basically just cut it this way evenly into blocks.
If I may, following on Kathleen's point, last year we spent almost $400,000 on Port Park Ridge. Now, $300,000 of that was paving, I'm rounding up, and $100,000 of that was for gravel.
No, that's proposed for this year.
And this year, we're proposing another almost $100,000 for gravel, same, well, Park Ridge.
No, last year was 270,000 for-
Park Ridge Drive.
But last year was Laurentide and Park Ridge.
And, well, okay, but-
The, the paved part of it, that had been one of the top 25 or worst roads in Washaw County was in Enliven, that road was one of them.
Okay, so, but to Kathleen's point, that neighborhood got $400,000 worth of work last year. And now we're proposing another $100,000, $96,000 this year. But to Kathleen's point, maybe that $96,000, maybe Park Ridge could wait till next year. That $96,000 could be spent on other roads that haven't been touched in years. But as far as I know, the road commission, road committee gets a list from the road commission, 10 roads, 12 roads, whatever it is, good prices.
Four this year.
You only got four this year? Okay, well, that's unusual, but they usually give you a whole bunch of, like a whole menu of just, but this year they only gave you four.
Well, that's-
That's what she said, she just read.
In prior years, we had a millage, so we had more money.
Well, but they did give a longer list.
Yeah.
They did.
And I'm surprised that they-
Well, wait a minute, in the past years, we gave them the list because we had the township-wide special assessment and we had a system for just connector roads. So that's why they, yeah, they didn't give us a list, we gave them a list.
Well, they also-
They wouldn't give us.
They, they told us what roads they wanted to work on. We told them the ones we, we wanted.
That, that's accurate. And David did this for years.
Well, which we ended up having our list be the, the list of improvements. It doesn't matter what they gave us.
But I see last year, we actually did do three roads that I don't think were ever, ever, ever done.
And that's what we're trying to do.
That's good.
Yeah, I, I haven't, I, I agree with doing gravel roads. Absolutely, I agree with gravel roads. I live on a gravel road. I don't want it paved. I just want a fairness factor for spreading it around.
So can I ask a question? Considering we have a May 2nd deadline and now we're getting a lot of like pushback on our list in various ways, shapes and forms, and we have a May 2 deadline, the RAC committee is not intended, excuse me, I'm talking. The RAC committee is not scheduled to meet until after this date. So what would you suggest we do?
I, I'm not suggesting the RAC do anything at this juncture. I'm suggesting this board figure out what we're going to approve in this contract tonight because, because of the timeline. I mean, we just got the list, you know, for, as part of this packet. We're working it through. We're all doing our best. I, I think we've, we've settled the budget issue. It, it just sounds like, um, yeah.
John hit, John hit his hand up.
Yeah, I do. I don't mind waiting till Kathy speaks if that's what she wants to make, I don't, it doesn't matter.
All of us. I'm going to raise another concern about funding Park Ridge. I've driven on it many times. I agree there to a ratio second. However, it got significant, Park Ridge and Laurentide got significant funding last year. The state is pointing it out. And earlier, Jillian, you commented that part of your reasoning for including Park Ridge had to do with the, wanted it to be a healing experience for the neighborhood. And, you know, I'm sorry if it was a bad experience last year, whatever.
It was, it's been going on since 2016, 14.
Part of that is, has to do with conflicts of the neighbors. Some of them wanted it and some of them didn't.
Paving, the paving portion.
Some of them even didn't want the drainage work. I mean, there was controversy about the drainage work.
Because of the paving.
I thought the drainage work was still proposed without the paving.
No, it, it's, the drainage part of it would be if there's like some brush overgrown or a tree grows too close to the road, then they take that out.
Okay, I'm just saying, I would be more comfortable with established criteria for making these decisions. And if you say you want it to be a healing time for Park Ridge residents, then okay, you know, that's made, fine. But there are other factors to take into account.
It wasn't just that, Kathy. We spent a long time discussing all these different roads. And I have been trying to work with the road commission since last October because they said the earlier the better. And I have been working with them and they have not gotten back with me until just this past, what, week or two? So this is, you know, this has been a really long, hard process and we did our best with what we are working on. And then, so, you know, I know you think that things should be, whatever your reasoning is, but, you know, the road advisory committee is a recommending body. We were created by the board in 2021 to do roads and to recommend. So this is what we're recommending. If you want to just-
We're trying to understand the rationale for these recommendations. I'm done.
We can give you the four factors. Volume, condition, history, and, and-
Quadrant?
Location. And by the way, the Park Ridge issue, you really don't understand it. Because what the controversy was, if they paved, it had to widen the road and people didn't want- And people didn't want their trees taken down. That was a real issue on Park Ridge, the paving.
And an eagle's nest.
See, all this gets convoluted because the facts aren't really known. Now, if you think you're smarter than we are, and we did all this work, okay, then you don't need us as a road advisory committee.
We're not saying that.
What's your alternative?
Not saying that. We're saying we're struggling to try to understand how we came to the decision, the recommendation that you get.
Why can't you trust us?
Oh, this wasn't included, the quadrant, ma'am, that was, that's not here either.
Then you should have given us criteria before today.
I haven't seen some of this before today. So that just was sent over by the road commission.
And it was just handed out right here for us.
Should have given us criteria.
It was wording that our terms had to include.
Not the roads, but the criteria by which we make our decision. If you have a problem with, with our process.
I, I don't have a problem with the criteria that the roads committee has laid out. I, I had a question about why, why the two that were recommended by the road commission were removed. I understand why that is. I understand East Pine View, West Pine View and Lakeview were never done. I, I have to say, I, you know, and I don't have, and I don't claim to have the technical knowledge that the members of the committee do or Gillian do on the road. I, I do wanna state though, just as a, a general matter, I, I do disagree, um, Gillian, with the mixing of the issue of the engineering S A D. Um, you know, kind of portraying that as something that the township owes residents. I just, uh, disagree with. Um, certainly if this road needs to be improved, it needs to be improved, but I think that's separate and apart from whatever decisions, um, the residents made in the past to do that engineering work.
I didn't bring that up. You did. Um, the only thing I brought up was that they, in the past, had be, started a SAD or, or however that worked out, and they were charged engineering without the improvement. So the reason why Park Ridge has never been done, as far as I know, with the gravel uplift. And that's not what the SAD was for. And the, the whole purpose of that SAD back then was to have it paved. And when they found out that they were gonna have to widen and take out the trees, including an eagle's nest, they said no.
Right.
But, but that's just something that happened. I don't, I don't think that's anything the township did wrong.
You cannot, okay, we're not gonna get into.
That's fine. That's another, that's another topic, but, but no, I mean, I'm, I'm being sincere. We can talk about another time, but.
If there's, you know, some facts that need to be shared, I prefer they be shared instead of just the. Well, the facts, the facts are, is that we have these agreements. We have to choose the agreements and get this to the road commission and then make sure that we regarding our proposals.
Right, yeah.
I, I'm submitting the final report for April thirty.
Yes, and we are, the, the road advisory committee is working on our process so that when we have future funding or even before that, which will all be presented to the board. But the only thing I know is that last year we presented the agreement based on the roads that the road advisory committee had chosen and the board adopted them. We didn't go through this, all these issues. So here's, we have improvements or we either adopt this or one or the other or. Or nothing is.
Yeah, I would.
Just first, oh, sorry.
Yeah, as I said, I would, um, support the one that's within budget, the three twenty one.
To that end, may I make a motion? Sure. I move that the Siom Township Board of Trustees adopt option number two, the three hundred and twenty one and forty seven dollar version with any excess funds to be used on Liberty Road between Sag's Leap and Z Road.
Um, in an amount not to exceed.
Well.
This is three hundred and twenty one thousand forty seven dollars payable from one oh one four four six.
Yes, support.
Can we afford that forty seven dollars? Was there support? Yeah, read.
Hello, attorney.
I just wanna remind you that I heard the clerk say not to exceed. And these contracts are very clear that these are estimated amounts and cost increases will be passed on to you regardless of your approval.
That's true, and they have gone above in years, above and below. They're all over the place.
They, they estimate high generally. They, and they even let us know that again.
Yeah, there, there was a time, I think it was just three years ago where we went over, so.
And I remember, have to look at it.
My only point was.
We could do a not to exceed of a higher amount.
Okay, thank you, John. On a roll call, please.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, riser, yes. Carrie?
Yes.
Yable?
No.
Flinttoft, yes. Brandt?
No.
Noel? Reed?
Yes.
Motion passes four to three.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gillian. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. M five, G C S I discussion. So I put this on the agenda because of, oh, well. Find my notes. We've had a contract with G C S I for I don't know how many, you know, how many years in the past.
Um, many years. We took a break for a few years. Um, and it's been in place for at least three, we are.
At least three, we've been out of contract for a few months. We're paying it month by month and we've budgeted only six months.
So with the recent, um. Well, okay.
Do you want me to show?
Yeah. We've had a, an informal subcommittee.
And several of us have met with the G C I, G C S I representative, John McCurtland. Um, originally it was me, Gillian and Judy.
Well, even before then, you were with Will.
I was with Will. Previously, Will had done it alone, but then there was concern on the board that there wasn't full sharing with the entire board. So I was appointed to be present for this many meetings as I could and be on all the correspondence. And that worked. I mean, it was fun. Um, so I've been on it for several years. Um. John has given us some recommendations. We all received a recent email from him, G C S I. Originally, he was encouraging us to continue to seek funding for the fire department based on our submission from last year. Our submission last year was partially funded, but not a hundred percent funded. So John originally had told us that, that deadline was rapidly approaching. We, she could, uh, updated our submission from last year. Everything was ready to go. We had a supporter, a representative Carrie Ryden was going to be our representative and she is still. However, some more things have changed. And the situation has now completely changed. Um, and I'm gonna let, I can go into the details or Gillian can, but basically the, we received notification from John that the House of Representatives, Representative Speaker of the House, Matt Hall is requesting that township, any municipality that receives any appropriations funding from the House has to submit a statement that they will comply with federal immigration law and that we have, we have to document that we have no policies or ordinance that include languages, language, dealing with federal immigration enforcement measures. So there are now conditions attached to this and I know there's concern among several board members. I spoke to John yesterday. He is willing to come and speak to the entire board at a next board meeting and give us an update on what G C S I has to offer. But the deadline is rapidly approaching for this submission. And we're gonna have to make a decision tonight. So it's a complicated discussion. I'm just starting the discussion here. There's a lot. Hey, I have more details I can share. We had a meeting set up with Morgan Freeman, State Representative for this Friday.
They all do it. It's okay.
Sorry. Um, this, for this Friday. And I think, I mean, one of the issues we're gonna have to discuss it is do we still go forward with that tour of the fire station? But John, I'm gonna be talking to John tomorrow morning and he wants, wants to know the outcome of our meeting tonight. So we need to discuss this and everybody needs to ask questions and try to understand what's going on. I've given you an overview.
Sure.
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll briefly comment on this and then, um, say what I hope we can discuss tonight. Um, my understanding is, um, John Horford, the G C S I lobbyist, gave us until Thursday to submit a written application. Um, and the certification, we reviewed it this morning and with our township attorney to make sure I fully understood. Um, the, uh, certification that's being required by the state house um, and publication standards, I've expressed my concern, which, um, suffice to say is given what's um, going on in this country with immigration enforcement, um, the lawlessness and the lack of due process. Um, I object, um, to complying with this and, um, recommend that we forego this this year. I would say it's for a few reasons. Um, one that's a, for, for reasons concerned about, um, stepping into that fray um, and being baited into it. Uh, I resent, uh, that our state representative is putting local units in this position. Second, on a practical measure, I think it's a long shot to even get such an earmark. Third, and this takes me to what I hope we can talk about, is I think we have demonstrated, um, we haven't had the capacity to, um, apply for these earmarks always in a way that makes a lot of sense. Last year's made a ton of sense and I thank everybody for your work on it. Um, funding fire the years before. That's why we have twenty five percent of the funding we need for Park Road. And part of the funding that we need for the pathway, and these are just kind of patched together in a way that, that don't make a lot of sense. So I do hope we can spend time tonight talking about G C S I, what value they bring to the township and if we wanna continue with them or not. Um, I don't see anybody before us tonight with a letter proposed for approval by the board. I don't see anybody before us tonight with an application for approval by Thursday. And so I'll assume, um, that no application or certification is going forth on behalf of the township.
I don't think so.
And so with that, I, I wonder if we could talk about the value of G C S I and if and how we wanna continue with them or not.
And are there two things, one? Are we kind, are there two things under this, on the table or under discussion right now? One is the value that G C S I provides us to hear of anything, or they have confirmed to know with, if you wanna have somebody, what should we have their focus on? And the other is whether we should certify to the state of Michigan like Lansing has to their letter, I certify that the city's rules, policy and ordinances do not include language that requires, encourages or supports subverting immigrate, immigration enforcement in any way or refusing to comply with federal immigration enforcement measures. That's the Democratic mayor from mayor who's Andy Shore from Lansing who said that. Whether we wanna send such a letter so that we're eligible for earmarks, grants.
John, I, I, I would, I would ask that we talk about the first item more than the second. Yeah, more than the second item. I will also say that letter that the city of Lansing sent is not compliant with the requirements, at least based on our reading this morning. That letter is not sufficient, um, to the requirements, the example that our lobbyist gave us.
So is there money at the table that Siom Township could be getting for? Like, we just had a, a long discussion about roads. Is there road funding on the table that we would be giving up?
It, it's earmark, so it's, it's for anything. My understanding from Kathy and Gillian is what's on the table right now is fire funding, cause that was the idea.
Well, that, right, but what John Horford said is that with this house, they're whittling pretty much everything down to, um, keeping the lights on, uh, removing twenty five percent from education and three point one billion for roads. Um, there are some for public safety, but most of that is for police. So it's that, um, not to say that fire wouldn't have some funding, but it wasn't like it's lower than with the police.
No, and I guess I'm not, I'm not saying it should be fire, it should be police, it should be roads, it should be parks, it should be this or that. I'm asking what pot of money might potentially be available to municipalities.
I just told you.
They, they haven't identified all the revenue. They're talking about shifting some of the money from schools. They don't know.
Um, I will say early on, but we, we, we applied this year. We got the application ready. John did say that the fact that Siom had applied last year for the fire appropriations would be helpful to our application this year because there were several members of this committee who were already familiar with Siom Township fire department issues. Now, I think that has changed. I think that this whole focus now, it's very intensely on the roads has changed some things. So I, I don't know. We just don't know, you know, if it's, if there's funding available. Apparently, the state house and senate are essentially not working together right now.
Right, whilst the public and the other side.
And so in fact, the state senate has sued state. So they don't even know. They're not, everything is at a standstill. And bills are not being passed. So the budget has not been passed. We don't know what the state budget is gonna look like yet. And now we have this rush for us to get this in, if we want to apply for it. And I just, I think the situation is an impossible situation.
Yeah, I, I would really recommend we take time, cause every year we get caught. Um, and, and really talk about if and how we wanna use G C S I, you know.
Okay, so I, you know, this is one.
For future years.
Different opinions. I, I do see the value in GCSI. Last year, they got hundreds of thousands of dollars in funding for us to the fire department.
I, I think it's just more of a matter of how we work effectively. Because we don't, we have our capital plan, so that's, that's a step, right? We have our capital plan. But aside from that, we don't have any stated prioritization of what funding sources we want to go for.
So all, all, all for discussion and deliberation and vote tonight is GCSI, rather than whether we're going to pass a letter with a resolution saying we're gonna not subvert federal immigration enforcement. That's not on the table.
Unless you're putting it on the table, but no, no one's putting it on the table.
Yeah, and that letter is only if you apply or submit an application for your request.
And we're not, we're not asking for anything, any money?
No.
If we're not asking for any money, then we don't need a what? But is there money to be asked for on behalf of Scioto Township?
If you want to sign that letter, John, so.
I would, I would sign that. I would proper such a letter if there's money to be asked for. If there, if there's road funds, if there are funds that might be available for parks, if there are pots of money that, that Ryngens or Forman or Hurman or somebody can help us, help us acquire, I, I, I would be in support of a resolution if there are pots or earmarks of money available on behalf of the township.
Yeah, then we could do all of liberty.
Yeah, and, and John, the example that Lansing gave are, you know, in brief review with our attorney this morning, that was not sufficient to comply. I, I will also say, I, I, I would, I would oppose it. And that's fine, you know, you, you could offer a letter and see what happens. I just think, you know, part of what I resent about the state house is putting local units in this position. And, and I'm, and I. Yeah, and it's, and I, I think things are so, so dynamic right now. And, you know, if this were a, you know, administration under, you know, George W. Bush or any, any other administration, but when we have people who are here lawfully being deported without due process, sent to CICOT in El Salvador. I, I won't support this. I'm just one vote, though. But I'm not, I'm not going to support this. And John, I don't want to keep talking about this because I too have concerns about targeting. Look at the, look at DHS, right, and the warrants on Wasna County with their I-9 and coming for the database of the Wasna County immigration. So I would like to stop talking about this now. And, and talk, unless you really want to write up this letter right now and you're feeling super passionate to bring a letter to a vote right now, I respect that. But if this is just chit chat, I would like to stop talking about it now so that we don't unnecessarily draw more attention to Scioto Township. So if you're serious, put forth.
First, I'm serious. And I resent that it's been called just chit chat. So if, if there are.
I'm not trying to diminish. I apologize for saying chit chat.
So, but I can read the room and think that even if I were, and I'm not saying I am or, but even if I were, I don't think that there would be four people in support of it.
No, John, I would not support it.
In that case, I'll move on. Thank you for accommodating my interest in discussing this matter. And I await further discussion regarding GCSI. I yield the floor.
I would feel comfortable to wait until next year, but this will give us an opportunity to figure out what we want with GCSI. And if we do priorities list, if we need an official subcommittee, but the board needs to be included.
Well, I do, I do have a, a general question. Aside from getting earmarks, what else is GCSI talented at? Because I, I do, and I ask that quite sincerely, because what we don't have is like a legislative advocacy platform for Scioto Township, you know, and if we had all the time in the world and capacity. But we really should have our policy priorities and advocate for them. Now, I know that they've been helpful on some Gelman things. When I've raised things about, you know, voting issues that have come up over the years, you know, they're not really plugged into that stuff. So are there legislative areas they're good at?
They are very involved in the legislative monitoring. They recently sent us a newsletter summarizing legislation activity in the House and Senate. Their firm employs a range of people, Democrats and Republicans. It's quite split. It's not biased on one side or the other. They try to meet the needs of the municipality. And it would be up to us to communicate clearly to them what we want. And I think that hasn't been enough sufficiently. We, we need to do a better job of that.
And I do appreciate all your work. I mean, I think we're getting better than we have in the past, but I do think we need to formalize priorities and.
I agree. I agree. Some of this has come up very fast this year and we haven't had a lot of time to reflect and respond after we talked to the board.
It's fast moving.
Yeah, it's been very fast moving.
I, I would like to comment on, in this environment of federal mandates coming down that supposedly should be implemented at a local level. And the discord in the Michigan legislators, legislation, legislators, I don't see GCSI providing much benefit to us if, I don't see them doing much legislation. We're not gonna submit funding requests because we will not comply with the federal government's long arms. So I don't really see the benefit at this point in time of GCSI in really giving us anything of value, because I really don't see us putting forth something that would be passed as legislation.
Isn't it worth hearing the presentation from John at our next board meeting? Would you four coming to that conclusion?
I, I think that's a good idea, but at the same time, I'm also worried about fiscally. The economy is in a very precarious state at the moment. We don't know if it's going up or down or sideways. And we've only identified six months of funding. We're currently on month one. But I think we need to say, okay, if we're gonna hear this presentation, are we gonna have this discussion at our next meeting?
And we, we did have that same presentation by John, I think, but it was like in October, so it was before this new board was here. I, I do wonder, Kathy, would, would it be reasonable, oh, I know it would be reasonable. Would you be willing to ask John to, you know, itemize his invoice at all or describe it all? I mean, we pay kind of a $3,300 retainer, you know, and maybe that's just the way it is. To kind of, but it's, but it's, it is, I mean, I'm aware of what he's doing, but David raised this when he first got on the board about is there any more detail we could get about?
Meeting so and so, we discussed on fire. I mean, you know, all we do is get here, I want 33. What did you do for us this morning? I think is what I'm looking for. I, I haven't, I've only been on the board for a month.
I know.
And I haven't seen anything, but, so.
Wow, and what is the, do they just go ahead and figure out what SIO was and then goes and looked, or do we direct them?
So in the past, early on, John had adopted a law exclusively with Will. And they came up with some ideas. Often, the board heard about them at the last minute and were aware of them as they were evolving. So what we would need to do differently is the board identify priorities. Then have a discussion with John, but I think we should hear his presentation first and then decide.
And I'd be, be interested in hearing from him any, like, I, just his, his very, very best ideas. Like, not the regular GCSI presentation we get periodically when we perennially have this conversation.
Done that in the past, way back.
Yeah, that, that's a good idea.
And in the past, we got quarterly in-person updates from GCSI.
That's a good idea.
The board could ask questions and they, those were always very informative.
Because I think in particular for our parks, our water and sewer, we have so many different functions where there's state legislation going on that's relevant. I, I, I don't think MTA is sufficient and I don't feel represented by MTA. You know, they're just kind of. Yeah, yeah, so I do see a benefit to having a lobbying firm if we use them wisely.
The major team, yes. Yes.
You know, I'm in first. I mentioned about quarterly reports.
We can ask, sure.
Yeah, and, and right now with everything up in the air, it changes daily. Don't watch or read the news, you'll be depressed and crazy. But, you know, in four months, if we, let's say, keep him for, keep GCSI for four months, things could drastically change and then it could be positive.
Just, just a question about our next meeting. If, if I have this noted right, we'd have John as a presentation. I also have a brief, brief five-minute presentation I'll be proposing from Alpha House. But Kathy, I also had noted that that would be the potential meeting for both TIFs, the Crossroads and Malloy's. And that seems rather like too many presentations.
It does.
Because I think Malloy's and Crossroads, that TIF, that sounds like a beefy topic. And I wonder if maybe we should do that on a night different than GCSI?
We've already told the, yeah, Flor has already got it, yeah, in motion. We spoke about it today and I told her.
So could we do GCSI May 27th? Not much.
Yeah. I will check with them.
May 27th for GCSI? Just so we don't overload ourselves.
But anyway, well. Okay, are we complete with this discussion?
Well, I may suggest that we appoint Kathy Knoll to be the spokesperson for the board with GCSI for the time being.
I'd support that.
Solely her or in conjunction with others?
Solely her, as we're trying to, to work through what service they might provide. It's simply organizing the events. We're not asking for anything at this point in time, right?
Terms of long-term representation with GCSI, I think it is beneficial to have two or three board members.
Right, and that's the thing. I, I, I'm not trying to get my foot in the door on that, but I would be curious if there are others on this board who want to have a role in that as well.
Look, not just sitting.
You want, Gillian, do you want to? He's asking.
No, I'm asking others. I mean, I'm not asking her, I'm asking if any, including her, obviously.
No, I don't really. You don't? No, I put in my 20 hours a week with everything that's on my plate.
I saw another hand down there, although I'm not calling out hands.
I, I would work on this.
Thank you. Riser, you're not on any committees right now, are you? Here, for SIO?
No, thanks for calling me out on that. Trying to fly it under radar. Who was?
So a friendly amendment, a motion by Grant, support by Glenn Topf to appoint Kathy, Kathleen and David to serve as GCSI liaisons.
Yes, that sounds good. Yes.
Is there anybody else who wanted to get in on this motion?
I think that'd be a quorum.
Yes.
I mean, OMA violation potentially.
We'd notice all your gatherings.
But you're asking about the motion, does that include more people?
No, I was asking about including. Did anybody else want to be part of that? We've got Kathy, Kathleen and David.
Is there?
Support by Riser?
So we have a motion by Grant, support by Glenn Topf.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
So, okay. Yeah. We can just do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? None? Motion passes? Great, thank you. Okay, so that is that, that's the conclusion of the fun part. Onto public comments. Again, this is the time for members of the public to speak for up to five minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees.
Hey, I was looking at the Vernal pools over there. This is a lady who likes to run around with the snakes and the frogs. And I want everybody to go back in time a little bit and think about what they were gonna do next door to the parkwood condos. Now, I want you all to think about too, the road committee. And in 2021, Kathy Knoll, there was Raleigh. I, I have a long memory. I put my voodoo dolls, though, away a long time ago. So when I look at all this, and I have a problem with earmarks, the way they have been done. And then tag it onto a bill. I don't care where you're coming from. I don't like, I said I was too honest for politics ever. So it's just my opinions as usual. And I like roll calls sometimes, though, because I can go back when there were more records. And I see how everybody voted on what they voted on. That, that gives me a little emphasis to things. And then I'm gonna tell you a funny story. Don't include this in the minute. So I'm, I'm getting older and I'm looking out my window. I have my Chihuahuas and a dog's had surgery. And I see this, what looked like a brown paper bag in my driveway. And it had a little white thing sticking off there. And I thought, I'd better go out there and see what that is all about. And, because I was thinking, well, who doesn't like me now? And it was a McDonald's trash bag with the receipt thing sticking on there, because some people can't rip their trash up properly. And I thought there was some irony, though, in this bird nest out here. When we think about Park Road and tell our, our Chris Chang that maybe when they're looking at those trails and stuff, that the Zoom goes in there so I don't have to come over here and ask for OHM's Park Road thing. I don't live on Park Road. I don't have to pay for Park Road. I knew that a long, long time ago. And you're gonna cut all those trees down and then keep the, the speed limit 45 or 50, like what I've had to deal with, where half my brain's bashed. like what I've had to deal with, where half my brains bashed out over here, because Peter Myers couldn't pay, they were paying people off. Not me. I wanted the road changed, and somehow the Wasna County Road Commission couldn't afford to do it light, I thought, talk to Mr. Schleck. And yet we could do Jackson Road here? I got issues. So think about all those things. And so I don't want to see any brown paper bags in my driveway. Caroline Altmar, Scioto resident, RAC committee member, if you all know. I wanted to start and ask the board a question, since apparently I can sort of do a little of that now. If the RAC presentation or the presentation had been voted down, what would happen? If you, if the vote had been four to three against the RAC presentation, what would happen? I'm asking. I mean, would, would no roads get done?
No, I, well, I don't think of it as a RAC presentation, it was a, a proposal.
Right, but if it had been voted down, so that.
We, we have a, a contract, we, we have an ARPA deadline of April thirtieth, we have a May second deadline, I mean, we would sit at this board table until we approved something. I don't know, would we call a special meeting? Would we, I wouldn't imagine, we wouldn't get through it tonight, but we would do what we need to do.
Okay.
I just, I don't know, I, I guess just procedurally, that'd be some options.
Just for those that voted no, I just think it would be very interested to have been in on that particular meeting, because see what your criteria is and how much better job you could have done than we could have done, so just case closed on that. I want to thank you for rejecting the onerous and cruel potential requirements of the immigration thing. That is a very sensitive point to me. I have very close friends and I have a family member that is a brown-skinned person legally in this country, born here, but she is terrified, and she has a little baby, two-year-old, and she's terrified for him. And so I, those are very near and dear to my heart, so any, I just very much appreciate your voting, like, just saying you would reject that, because that has, to me, that has to be. And lastly, regarding the rule of order regarding the recognition piece of, you know, the chair recognizing, there has been a lot of under-the-breath snark in this board, this board. There have been interruptions, a lot of interruptions. I'm hoping that as Grant, Trustee Brandt said, that perhaps they're in the past would be nice, but they were there before, and I'm, I am very much in favor of keeping that piece in there as a formality, so that it's like a, it's like an enforcement piece to that, because the snark, under-the-breath snark is really not appreciated. I just think, I think that's really unprofessional, I just think that that just sucks mightily, so, anyway, thank you.
Anyone else present for public comments?
Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. Trustee Knoll, I don't know if your mic is not turned on or you're just not close enough to it or whatever, but it is really hard to, I'm in the front row and I'm losing about twenty-five percent of what you're saying.
I had it going on and off.
Well, I'm just saying that from where I'm sitting, about twenty-five percent, if you had somebody sitting in the back row, I doubt.
Yeah.
We get really close.
We get really, really close.
You're like a rock star, you know.
Can anybody?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, so for the online new public comment, first one will be Mary, followed by Pam Boyd. Go ahead, Mary.
Thanks. My comments also have to do about the audio. I'm having difficulty hearing particularly David and John, and Kathy, to me, comes in and out because she's directing, she's turning her head to look at the, the people she's talking to on the board. Kathleen and Jessica come through the best, and I think that's because they're using, they're very aware of the microphone as a microphone. Yeah, theatrical background, I don't know what it is, but, but in any case, that's, that's the audio report from Zoom land.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Thank you.
It worked. Thanks, David.
Pam, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Pam Boyd, Scioto resident, ditto on the, please speak into your microphone directly, because it was very hard to, to hear. Have a couple of notes here. I appreciate attention to the budget on, on sticking to a budget and making it. I would like to ask for this board to take a survey of residents and ask residents what they think is more important, money to be put towards roads or money to be put towards a more expensive heating and cooling system for Township Hall. This board, as well as the previous board, has had a bad habit of speaking over each other. Your negative comments, Trustee Brandt directed specifically towards the supervisor was, was inappropriate. Four of you on this board have a history of being hostile and removing duties and salary increase for, for reasons against a person on this board. It was unprofessional. Questions are fine, hostility is not. One of the overall directions of this board tonight has been the lack of respect for this current supervisor and what she brings to this board. Since none of the four of you have ever answered my question on why you have voted to remove duties from the supervisor or have explained what the problem is, I have to conclude, all of you have fabricated a story to avoid working with someone who might have a different opinion than you, and that makes you look not like the people I voted for. I voted for people who were going to work together, and what I see in these board meetings over the last couple of months has been a lot of disrespect and attacking and, and cutting, and I, I guess maybe you are so insulated on your little board positions that you can't really see what we residents are, that are paying attention, and other people in the, in the community are paying attention, and there's been a lot of reduction of respect, and that hurts Scioto residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Yeah, anyone else?
Anyone else that wishes to speak at public comment? Please raise your Zoom hand. There's no hands raised.
I'd like to make your comment, please.
Kathleen?
Pam Boyd, on January the seventh, I extended an offer to you to discuss anything going on in Scioto Township. To date, I don't believe you've taken up my offer, the offer still stands, thank you.
Was that a personal offer? I don't recall receiving a personal offer. I recall you emailing me and we had a discussion.
It was a personal offer via text with other people involved, it was extended to you, thank you.
I, I did not receive it.
Okay, motion to adjourn? At, what time do we have?
Ten twenty.
Ten twenty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None, motion passes.
Thanks, everybody.